All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Anacortes City Council Meeting of October 7th, 2024. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Franciac, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Fantini.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougall.
Here.
Ms. Hubig.
Here.
Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I move to excuse Councilmember Cleland McGrath from tonight's meeting.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Moulton, and second by Mr. Young, to excuse Ms. Cleland McGrath. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? All right, as usual, our first item is announcements and committee reports. I've got, looks like, four. Thanks to the Parks Department for their extra effort over the weekend for supporting the Beer Near the Pier event, as we hosted that on the Depot Plaza, of course, a Chamber-sponsored event. And then Annual Flood Awareness Week is this week. Skagit County Department of Emergency Management, yes, the ones that sound that tsunami siren off today, those same people will be offering information to community members about flood preparedness. Obviously coastal flooding are a concern here in town, but we do have a water treatment plant that is on the Skagit River that's always a high of mind for us. Anyway, they will host, you can sign up on their website, and Tuesday, October 8th, oh, that's tomorrow, they're holding a community webinar. Also, you can get on the Skagit County website for a variety of emergency alert tools, such as Code Red, to sign up for news releases and to receive key emergency information. Next, speaking on emergency preparedness, Anacortes Fire Department hosting an open house this Sunday, correct, nod ahead, Sunday, the 13th, okay, just making sure, 12 to 3 at Fire Station One, that's 1016 13th Street. Fire truck rides, fire safety information, firefighter dress-up photo opportunities, and a demo of the thermal imaging camera, snacks and fun for all ages. Reminder, if you haven't seen, today we closed portions of Fourth, intersection of Fourth and T, for the wastewater treatment plant outfall relocation. So again, that's a new 48-inch outfall pipe. Residents and businesses in the Cap Santa area can still have access to Fourth and T via Ninth Street, Market Street, Sixth Street during the closure. Again, this is a major project. Appreciate everybody's patience to get this major pipe in the ground. It does require the closure of those streets and to be safe there. And then Comp Plan announcement, Comp Plan, mark your calendars for Wednesday, the 23rd, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. This is an open house, community open house, for be part of the future of Anacortes for the city's comprehensive planning process. Kids and families, welcome. More information, as always, on plantacortes.com. Okay, I think that's all I have. So, council reports. First up, I've got Fiber Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougall.
Fiber Committee met on September 26th. Attendees were Ms. Shu, Mr. Lindberg, Mayor Miller, Mr. Huglen, myself. And really quickly, the numbers, actually, updated number as of today, we have 2,500 and, oh shoot, I just put it down, 32 customers in service. And we have achieved, basically, actually, we're just over 50% take rate across the entire city, so actually 51, very nearly 51%, which is a terrific milestone. I want to call out also, the pilot area is almost 60% signups. We covered, basically, the team had done a significant sort of post-mortem analysis on what happened with the outage a few weeks back, and have implemented a number of controls internally, but also looking to implement a citywide, like, mass notification system through Civic Plus. We discussed, basically, some cash flow and revenue projections for the next couple of years. We'll be doing the bond here at the end of '25. And with projections with revenues, operating expenses, and the bond, basically, we would look at, the fiber's still pulling about $300,000 from next year from the general fund, but then in 2027, or that's in 2026, but then in 2027, with the growth of continued customer signups, we actually see that flip and where it's generating a net profit above and beyond, like, paying for not only operating expenses, but also the bond payment. So, projected of about $200,000, that in 2027 in profit, and then that number should grow over the years as well. Other couple items, the EDA Construction and Department of Commerce grant, the Summit X work is about 36% complete, and 100% of the aerial is done. We've received a couple reimbursements from EDA, just cash reimbursements on the grant, and are still waiting, like, the final 225K will be reimbursed when the contract, when the Summit X construction is complete. And then scheduled, the schedule map for the EDA and, like, estimated timelines, is that actually posted on the fiber site? Okay, cool. So the EDA, sort of, construction area is divided into four, four sort of rough geographies, and if you happen to live in, sort of, the south end of town, or Cap Santa, basically, the construction schedule, or estimated schedule for installs is up on the fiber team's website. For now, that's about it.
All right, thank you. 2,500 customers, that's a big deal, and I know there's at least a couple of us on the dais that are looking for, anxiously watching that map to get to our homes. So again, please sign up. Any questions for fiber? All right, next up, Finance Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Finance Committee has not met since last week.
Thank you. Housing Affordability Community Services Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Our committee met on October 2nd, on Wednesday morning, and we had a presentation from the Able Housing Initiative, which is a group here in town, most of which are parents of differently-abled adults, and young adults, and other members of our community. Their population is between ages 21 and 60. A bulk of them are ages 30s and 40s, and many of their parents are aging out. And these are people that are not able, they all have different needs, but they are not able to live completely independently and on their own. They have financial backing, generally from their families. They work, they have government benefits, they are, they don't have zero income, but they need substantial assistance. And we identified this part of our community as a group that has substantial needs in our unmet needs presentation that we gave to City Council in January 2022. As their parents age out and aren't able to provide for them on an ongoing basis anymore, they are going to need a different set of housing than we have here in Anacortes. An adult family home is a type of housing that might be suitable. We don't have any of those. They, this group is specifically looking to try to create a set of housing similar to what the Family Center has achieved with a single campus, where they can share some of the resources, some of the support that they would need to be able to continue to live here in this community. And the group related the incidents of at least one person who, whose relatives died, and they were able to get a bed from the state in Sejrooli, which means they were disconnected from all of their community, and they were disconnected from all of their activities, all at once, when their parent and their other family member died. A really unfortunate circumstance for that person. So as we go into the comprehensive plan update project, and we talk about the 1,500 housing units that we need over the next 20 years for 0 to 50% of the area median income, or the 2,000 units for 0 to 80% of the area median income, I think that this group and the needs of these people that we were talking about helps put a face on some of the people that fall into those groups, who need housing, and in some cases, what could be considered permanent supportive housing. And so it'll be important for us to keep all of that in mind, and who we're talking about when we're talking about planning for that housing at that lower-income level. They had a couple of asks of us, first of all, that we keep this top of mind as we work through the Comp Plan, that we support their needs through policy updates and the comprehensive plan, that we help them find land to the extent that we can, and then also that we share ideas and expertise as they work this project. And they, you know, would very much like to buy a couple of houses in a cul-de-sac, or something along those lines. They would prefer to have access close to Safeway, a lot of them work maybe at Safeway or elsewhere downtown, and so having sidewalks and bus service, and really, a lot of the things that all of us would like to have would be ideal for this group. And we, of course, said we would support that as a committee. And then, in the second half of our meeting last week, we also met with Bill Turner, former council member, retired developer. He spoke about his support of Habitat for Humanity, he used to be on the board of that organization, and he spoke about his support for a multifamily property tax exemption program, which is a program we don't have here in Anacortes. And we had a good interaction with him about the types of ideas that he had for supporting more housing in Anacortes for the people that work here and aren't really able to afford it today. And then Ms. Moulton reported on some of her interactions with the Low-Income Housing Alliance. And we have reduced our schedule as we head into budget season, so HACCS, our committee will be meeting on the first Wednesday of each month through the end of the year, and then we'll reset our schedule after that.
Any questions for HACCS Committee? All right, next up is Public Works Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. The Public Works Committee met at 5:00 p.m. today with Public Works Director Andy Rayhume, and our engineer Logan Lee, and also Will Ludeman up in operations. And we had a great conversation about several things. One was about the new outfall going in from the wastewater treatment plant out to Guimas Channel, and the on-land work has begun, and a couple of intersections are closed, and there, there's currently work with a consultant to determine if we could do some boring and drilling of the tricky part of where the pipe needs to go instead of blasting. So we have our fingers crossed for that, that it will be drilling instead of blasting, because that would just be a lot quieter and less disruptive for people. We talked about the 12th and Commercial Avenue intersection, and just clarified some things about the level of service, since we changed it from being a roundabout to keeping it a signalized intersection, but improving it with updated, modernized technology in the signal system itself. We also talked about that the lanes will be reduced to three in each, three north, three south, and what, how that will impact traffic. And the data shows that the level of service will remain equal up until 2045, instead of diminishing over those years, as it would if we left it the way it is now. So there will also be pedestrian improvements and bicycle improvements as well, with the idea of making it safer for everyone. And also, there will be a raised crosswalk table at 11th Street, crossing over Commercial, so that will be safer for pedestrians. They don't have to step down, they'll be more visible, and also, it will be a nice traffic calming feature as people head down into Old Town and kind of just naturally slow them down. So that was great. We hope to go, well, we need to go out to bid for that as a city by the end of the year. So that is happening. WashDOT has a channelization plan that's been proposed, and there's been communication back and forth, so we should, we should know, that should be confirmed really soon, because it's October. We also talked about putting Ninth Street and our intersection into our capital facilities plan, there'll be more on that later. And then we talked a little bit about some traffic safety issues that have been brought to us by our citizens, and one of them being the four-way stop proposed at the corner, the four-way at Fourth and T, because we've been, it's dangerous, and recently a dog was killed there, and apparently, an engineer has signed off on it, so we think we're going to be able to move forward with that. So hopefully slowing people down from ripping up and down Cap Santa like they tend to do. We talked about a couple other traffic safety things that we have some homework to do on, and then we'll discuss those at our next Public Works Committee meeting, and then we'll report on those at council. So, thanks.
Great, thank you. Any questions? All right, Library Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
The Library Committee met last, last week, I think it was last Wednesday, myself and Director Jeff Vogel. A couple of highlights from that, summer reading has wrapped up, and that was a huge success. We had over 800 people signed up, including almost 50 adults, 2,200 attendees at our children's summer reading programs that they had throughout the summer, and 38 teens at those teen programs as well. We also talked about the Children's and Family Place Play and Learn Series. So this is a series that begins in October, it is unfortunately at capacity, but this is a lot of classes on early childhood development, speech therapy, nutrition, family resource coordinators, and early childhood mental health professionals that will be presenting to those that have signed up. Those, those classes are small, which allows for a lot of individualized interaction, which is great for those that need that. Also, our 10- to 13-year-olds put together a escape room at the library, and that is available for those people that enjoy escape rooms, that'll be going on through October. Also, this October, the library is going to be at the Haunted Walk on the 26th. They're also going to be doing something new this year, one of the librarians, Trish, has come up with a haunted library, and that's going to happen in the meeting room on Friday, October 25th, from 12 to 5:00 p.m., and Saturday, the 26th, from 10 to 3 o'clock. I'm sure it will be spooky, so make sure you check that out. There's lots of other programs and events, too, so be sure to check their website to find out about that. And then, of course, the teen area renovation, which we've all heard about here at council, is live to bid right now, and we're hoping for some great bids, and that closes on October 9th, so we should have some more visibility around that pretty soon. We also had a pretty in-depth budget discussion, and we were joined by Courtney O'Rourke, who I believe is the president of the Library Foundation, yeah, the Library Foundation. And it really went into a deep depth, deep depth on what we are providing as a city, but what I was also really encouraged by is how much our foundation and friends of the library contribute to our library to make it what it is. I mean, there is a significant financial investment that is being put forth by that group. It was great to have Courtney at that meeting to kind of go into some of that as well. And then finally, Staff Training Day with all the Skagit libraries are going to be on November 22nd, so the library will be closed on November 22nd, for those that use it regularly. Thank you.
Always, always lots of stuff going on at the library. All right, any questions? All right, next, Public Safety Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubig.
Thank you. Public Safety met on the 1st. Mayor Miller, myself, Councilmember Fantini, and Councilmember Cleland McGrath were there. Most of our time was spent discussing the fireboat, which is on the agenda for later in the meeting, so I'll let the team talk about it most then. But please know that we spent at least, I think, 45 minutes going over stuff and making sure that we understood as a committee what was being brought forth, that we understood how the money was going to be spent, how our firefighters and EMS folks were actually going to be trained, be taken care of, making sure that we felt good about putting people into a boat, making sure that they were trained well, and making sure that there's not anything that needed to be taken into consideration around extra training. There are going to be some internal training programs designed by an EMS employee to actually train other people. So we feel, we feel really good about what's coming toward council later tonight. One of the things that was brought up during the meeting that I think is a really neat point to mention here is that because of the proximity of Station One to where the boat is, or will be moored, the newer one, in the marina, we have some of the fastest, if not the fastest, response time within the state of somebody going from a station out to an actual rescue boat. So it was a very, very, very good conversation, and I want to thank everybody who was there. We had a lot of questions, and they were answered very well. We had a few other things that we discussed near the end related to the police department. Wanted to give an update that the Criminal Justice Training Center that was originally destined for Mount Vernon has been moved to Arlington, and they are doing a soft opening for that. Training will likely start in January, so we will be able to send more folks only to Arlington instead of all the way down to Burien, which will be really nice for people who have families and may like to come home that night. We also had a very brief conversation around parking and parking tickets. There have been, since we had our ticket officer go part-time, halftime, four hours a day or so, there have been 150 warnings given, 81 parking tickets issued with 40 of them paid, and the rest of them contested. So it's been very interesting to just see kind of how the general public and the business owners and our temporary taxpayers and guests downtown have been feeling about our parking and our parking enforcement. So it's good to know that more warnings are given out than parking tickets, because people are listening. It's a good thing. And that's about it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
Miller.
Mr. Young.
No, I just wanted to add that I was at an event a couple of weeks ago, and one of the people there had gotten a warning, and somehow, they also got a text indicating that they needed to move their car. So I just thought it was just such a wonderful, sweet way that they were reminded more than once, as we build up to, you know, I guess, sort of a tougher enforcement when it's necessary. But the first move is kindness, and, but just a general reminder that we do have some rules that we need to follow. So, thank you.
All right, Mr. Walters.
There's one other announcement. I will be teaching a class on the fundamentals of the Growth Management Act and comprehensive planning in the state of Washington for the senior college, three Tuesdays in November, November 5th, 12th, and 19th. Anybody can sign up at seniorcollege.org for a nominal fee. And we have a number of people signed up, and a couple Planning Commissioners, and I think it will be a good class for anybody that wants to really understand what it is we're doing when we are working through our comprehensive plan update.
Any other announcements or committee reports? Okay, not that those weren't all awesome and fun. This next one, Item 3G, is awesome and fun. Anacortes Community Forestlands Lifetime Achievement Award. Mr. Voggs, you're already here to kick it off. Let's go.
Good evening, Mayor Miller, members of the council, and members of the audience. Many years ago, a colleague of mine in another department said, you know, the Parks and Recreation Department should be the Fun Department, right? So every once in a while, we do try to be the Fun Department. And this is a little more than fun. This is, this is a really great chance to honor an individual who's been a cornerstone of the community forestlands, and I guess with that, another thing it says is that the community forestlands have been around a while now. So thank you, elected officials, for your ongoing support of the community forestlands. In the late 1980s, Bruce Rustad decided to turn his sights on and point his mountain bike toward the Anacortes Community Forestlands. Over the next three and a half decades, Bruce, along with many hard-working cohorts, would transform our beloved trail system and the way folks would be able to enjoy them. While the cast of volunteer helpers has been many, special mention must be made of Dick Kohler. Bruce and Dick have never been short on advice from me, and many a park staffer has benefited from this wisdom over the years. Bruce's first decade in the woods culminated in working with city staff on a new edition of the ACFL Trails Map. That first edition of the new map has not changed too much to this day. Bruce's drafting skills and firsthand knowledge of the trails added a lot of value to the maps, as well as making them much more user-friendly. In 2001, Bruce joined the ACFL Trail Committee as the mountain bike representative. In those days, the committee was meeting fairly regularly as adjacent development forced a lot of use and access decisions. If there was a question about a trail, Bruce was ready for a site visit, and typically very ready to share his opinion on whatever the situation might be. Parks and Recreation Director John Lunsford says of Bruce, "When I took over for Bob in the Woods, he mentioned the importance of reaching out to Bruce Rustad, both as an avid volunteer and simply just to keep an eye on him." Bruce has never shied away from a trail project. Much of his work stands strong to this day, used happily by bikers, hikers, horses, and motorbikes. Bruce may still be found logging mile after mile in the ACFL, still clearing down trees, fixing trails, sharing his observations, and still serving as the mountain bike representative on our parks, on our trails committee. He is the definition of a local trail user, and on behalf of the City of Anacortes staff, residents, and countless visitors, I congratulate Bruce Rustad on receiving the first-ever Anacortes Community Forestlands Lifetime Achievement Award. You gotta come over to the mic, Bruce.
Yeah, me and Johnny went back a long ways. Yes, Johnny Lunsford. When I started in the forest land with him and Brian Adams, Brian Adams was in charge a little bit, and John was, and that. But every time I got asked to go in John's office, I was always worried. Now, what did I do wrong this time? I miss working on the trails, making them better for people. And that's what I do out there. So that's what I enjoyed for, what has been, 50-some years now, so. And there's a lot of people out using the trails now, and they're, you know, going to be, but things out there with the trails, people got to realize, they're always changing with the weather and erosion and that type of things and that, so things have to be changed a little bit on some of these trails. But now we got to go through a procedure to do that before I would just do it.
Well, thank you. Thank you again, Bruce. Appreciate that. Oh, yeah, don't forget your hard, your wonderful hardware. Okay, we are going to move on to Item 4 on our agenda, and it's Public Comment. And this is your opportunity, any member of the public wish to address the council. Anything that's not on our agenda, I've got two folks signed up, John and Jessica, Vic and Grant Funding, we do have that in other business, so if you're good for waiting for that, okay, that'll be coming up. So anybody else want to address the council, anything that's not on our agenda? I don't have anybody. Oh, okay, yeah, come on up. Just come to the microphone. Yep, be sure to state your name and the city you live in, and make sure the microphone's on. It'll be a blue, maybe, one more time. Make sure the lights.
Well, there we go.
There we go. So name and city.
Hi, my name is Karen Klein. I live in Anacortes. And I would like to address the potential crosswalk or, on 32nd Street, the safety crossing on 32nd.
Okay, a little bit closer to the microphone to make sure, sorry.
Thanks, I usually talk loud enough, but I'll speak into the mic. My mother just recently moved into Cap Santa, and thank you all for letting me speak, mayor, council, audience. My mother just recently moved into Cap Santa, and she's got a little four-legged room. My mother just recently moved into Cap Santa and she's got a little four-legged roommate that likes to walk. And, and they have a nice dog park at the Cap Santa, but he likes to walk. And she was gonna come with me tonight and we were speaking this weekend about tonight and speaking. And I told her maybe she wasn't a good representative to bring because I think she gets more steps per day than I do and maybe a lot of people. But she's got this four-legged roommate, they walk through a couple times a day. And, and she said, "I am thrilled to learn that the City of Anacortes Traffic Safety Committee has added a Storvik Park slash 32nd Street pedestrian crossing project to the city's capital facilities plan." She crosses 32nd Street a few times a day and would appreciate safer crossing. As a senior, trekking to the current crosswalks is an endeavor that limits her ability to enjoy the beauty of Storvik Park. And Storvik Park has been fabulous. There is always something going on. She is, it's just great. So, we urge you to approve an improvement project within the next capital facilities plan. And I myself, I came home along our avenue and I appreciate the median, the roundabouts, the speed sign. I know these measures slow me down. Anyone else? And then I came up M Avenue to pick her up and again, appreciate the line markers and the bicycle lanes and the parking. I think those narrow lanes, what did you say, Carolyn? Traffic calming features. I like that. But then, and, and then up above M Avenue on 32nd, there's good line markings, but nothing between M and Commercial. And we've got some little old ladies and their dogs crossing the street. Yes, they're jaywalking. My sister said, "From a personal point of view, it appears that jaywalking is getting more dangerous due to increased resident street parking, which reduces visibility both for the jaywalkers and the drivers. I've also noticed a clarity, a lack of clarity for some drivers on the lane designations near Commercial and in hoping the crosswalk would remind drivers that 32nd Street is not a four-lane highway." So, we urge you to put this in your budget for soon, to get some of those good safety features that have already been done in Anacortes on that section of 32nd Street.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yep, and we'll be, council will be talking about it later on. Anybody else? Yes, sir, come on up.
My name's John Furlott and I'm here basically to talk about the Vic Center. And I've been a little over 15 years doing that and I would say most of the members that work at that center are similar to mine. And we all have probably a lot of experience that we can relate to as far as this town and to other parts of the world that we've all, all traveled. Now, some of our head counts, if you want to call it that, at the Vic Center has dropped off a little bit, but because they can go on computers and on laptops and find certain data. But I'm utterly amazed that a number of people that have come in who say, "I got all this information on my computer or my phone, but I really don't fully understand it or it's a little bit goofy." And so, they're, of almost anything, they ask now more questions than they asked before. The other large group of people that come in, not surprisingly, are local people and they come in because they got family or relatives coming to town to visit and they want as much information as they can possibly get. So, while sometimes people look at things just like a head count as front of a number of people in there, I'm saying that what's also surprising is the number of people that have come in that will spend over an hour. And sometimes we, we have to tell other people, we gotta stop and talk to these other folks that just came in. And that wasn't the way it was about four or five years ago. So, it's changed, but it still continues to be good because what are they asking for? They're asking for places to visit, places to eat, places to stay. And we have to be a little careful there, but we have a lot of printed sheets that give them all that information. And then there's a certain number that are looking to buy property here. So, I think it's all good for the City of Anacortes. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Yeah, Ms. Cazzer, do you want to come up now or, or you want to wait till we get to the lodging tax discussion? Okay, all right. We're, we're almost, well, we'll see. You never know. Anybody else want to comment on anything else? Okay. All right, we'll move on to our consent agenda, items 5A through D.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 5A through D.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Moulton and then a second by Ms. Hubig to approve the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We are on to item six and 6A is a public hearing on the 2025 budgeted revenue sources. This is a discussion item only. Mr. Hoagland.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and members of the audience. I put a few slides together to go over our revenue sources. I'll try to keep these comments brief, but the state law does require that we hold a public hearing on revenue sources each year as part of the budget process. And the statute specifies to include a 1% property tax increase. And I believe that's the reason for the public hearing, to give the public an opportunity to speak about that 1% increase if they, if they would like to. So, I'll go through, I'll go through that in a little more detail once we get to that section, but to kind of an overview, the three largest tax revenue streams the city has make up 75% of the taxes collected. And that's, those three revenue streams are the property tax revenues, sales tax revenues, and utility tax revenues. Property tax is limited, limited to 1% increase per year if approved by council. The sales tax, we are seeing a second consecutive year of decreasing revenues and our utility tax revenues as in total continue to be pretty flat. So, property tax, too, to begin with, 2024 was the first year that we had the increased property tax levy after the Prop 1 to increase property taxes for public safety. That revenue stream, this year, the actual property tax levy was $8,405,000. The property taxes, the property tax revenues that we use in our budget development does assume that a 1% increase will be taken. Pardon me. And I also assume a $55,000 of new construction to be added to the tax rolls. That would bring the total increase of the levy 239,000 and then that brings us to an estimated 2025 levy of 8,544,000. I wanted to go through what that 1% increase would mean to the property taxpayers in the community. So, the, it's based on millage and assessed value. And the way you get to millage is by taking the city's total assessed values. This year is 6.2 billion and you express that in terms of thousands, which brings it to 6.2 million. Take the city's property tax levy of 8.4 million and then divide that by the assessments as expressed in thousands and that'd give you $134. And that's what our current millage is. So, to figure out your taxes for your home, you can take the assessed value, which you can get off the county website, the total assessed value for your home divided by 1,000. In this case, if you use the example of 750,000 in assessed value divided by 1,000, gives you 750. Multiply that by the millage and that gets you $1,007. So, that's what the city tax levy would be on a $750,000 home. And then a 1% increase on that would be $10 for the year. This, the bottom portion of this chart just shows the total tax levy for the county, all the different, all the different taxing districts and, and different assessments. Bring the total millage here in the City of Anacortes to $7.53. So, that same $750,000 home would pay a total of $5,652 in property taxes. Okay, makes sense? Take a look at sales tax real quick. This line chart shows 2024 as, is the red line. So, you can see it's kind of the middle of the pack there, which is not preferable under the Washington City financing model. It really only works under a growing economy because property taxes are limited to that 1% per year. So, you rely, we rely on growth in sales tax and utility tax to make up that difference. Utility tax, for the most part, for a number of years, has been pretty flat year to year. So, we really rely on the sales tax increases year to year. So, what we're looking at to this point through, this is through August receipts and we're down about 6.1% compared to the same period last year in 2023. Looking at the kind of historical trend by, by month, the purple line down here is showing the January through August collections by year. So, you can see last year, we were at 3.8 million, this year we're at 3.6. So, we're down 6.1% compared to last year. Last year, we were down 2.4% compared to 2022. And again, this is January through August receipts. So, setting the sales tax for the, for next year, there's a lot of, a lot of things going on in the, in the economy that are kind of hard to, kind of hard to nail down. So, what we did is looked at the collections that we have through August, which was at 3.6 million dollars. And historically, we've collected 65% of the total year's sales tax by August. And if you project that out to the end of the year, that would give you 5 million, 5.5 million in sales tax revenues for the year. As I said, we're in our second year of decreasing revenues, but because of the Fed's action to reduce interest rates, we're assuming that'll ripple through the economy in a, in a positive fashion and that will generate additional sales. So, what I'm proposing for the 2025 budget is that we set 2025 revenues at the 2024 projected balance. So, we're projecting to collect 5.5 million in 2024. I would propose using that as our 2025 revenue expectation.
Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters.
And for your year-end, 2024 projections, are you incorporating projections of higher sales tax revenue than what we have seen throughout the rest of this year based on Fed action to reduce interest rates?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a good question. It's, it's just so hard to nail down right now. We actually have seen, September sales tax has come in since I put this together and that was up over the September receipts for 2023. I mean, it's, it's likely too, too quick for that to be a result of the Fed action. And it's been, it's been a little bit erratic. The different categories of sales tax generation through the year has been a little bit erratic with the exception of hospitality. That's the one area that hasn't really decreased, but we've seen decreases in all of the other major areas like residential construction, commercial construction, boats, cars have all been down. But, but looking at it from month to month, it's not consistent. Some months are up, some months are down. Overall, it's down, but, but there hasn't been a consistent trend. So, I guess all that to say, it's hard for me to picture what the rest of the year will look like at this point.
But, but you have made a projection. Your, your projection there is 5.5 million for year-end 2024?
Correct.
So, is that based on incorporating lower interest rates or just based on what you've seen in prior months?
Yeah, no, that's, so that's not based on
Okay.
any activity the Feds took, right?
Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Thank you. Mr. Hoagland, I always appreciate how you are conservative with our numbers. You're conservative with how we spend money and you try to squeeze as much out of it as we can while making sure that we're prepared for the unforeseen. And in this case, you know, you were giving that our trends have been going down. Would you elaborate just a little bit more on where we're seeing those revenues decreasing? And then, you know, and, and I'm assuming, because I also watch the Fed daily, it's just part of what I like doing in the morning. But part of that is the belief that in lowering interest rates, people, consumers, will sort of continue to do what they do. They're more buying, there are more things that start to happen. Is that sort of tied in? Would you sort of address those two things for the public and also me? Thank you.
Yeah, so, looking at the last, the last few years, our, our top, top sales tax categories are routinely online sales, residential construction, commercial construction, boats, cars, and hospitality. And so, of those top six or eight categories, those are all usually there maybe in one, you know, place versus another from month to month and, and year to year. But where we've seen the biggest decrease over the last three years has been in construction. Commercial construction has dropped off significantly and residential construction is, has, has dropped off, you should put it the other way. Residential construction has dropped off significantly and commercial construction has almost dropped off altogether. Boats, cars are also down. The one area, hospitality, there are different categories within that hospitality kind of overarching category. And it's, it's interesting, the lodging tax has been pretty consistent. We're trending in lodging tax about the same as we did last year, which was, you know, a record high or near record high that we've collected. Full-service restaurants have increased year-over-year the last several years, but some of the other categories like limited service or, I can't remember what some of those other categories are, have dropped off. But those, that kind of higher tier of hospitality has, has continued to increase year-over-year.
Is that uniquely Anacortes or is it happening in other cities in Skagit and Washington? This is sort of what everyone is seeing?
Yeah, that's a good question. I can't answer that unfortunately. I haven't reached out to my counterparts across the county about that, but I think I will. It's, it's a good question. I know that in the last, last year, was talking with, with them, with my counterparts about construction because we'd seen such a decrease and they hadn't seen that in other parts of the county. Yeah, but at this point, I don't know what that looks like.
Mayor Miller. Mr. Fantini.
Yeah, just a, a couple of questions and comments. So, I know in 2023 and 2024, our utility tax receipts have continued to go down. I was given some hopeful information when Mr. McDougal gave the projection that by 2027, we'll be selling a positive on the Fiverr. So, I imagine that's gonna impact our, our utility rates in, in 2027. So, that'll be a good thing. One of the areas that, so in my day job of banking, we do a lot of lending, whether it be mortgage or commercial or whatever. And I know there was a lot of talk that with this most recent Fed rate decrease, that we were gonna see a lot of action. And in the housing market is where we tend to see that pretty quickly. We have not seen that pretty quickly yet and I know it's kind of been a surprise to those of us in the lending industry that we haven't seen the response that we were gonna get. So, with your projections, talking about the, the decreases are gonna lead to more revenue, that, how many, how many are you projecting in for 2024? Are you, are you thinking that maybe there'll be like one more decrease, a couple decreases?
Yeah, I'm, so, I have ulterior Yeah, I'm, so I have ulterior desires about this too, because we have an upcoming bond issue. But yeah, probably, I'm probably looking at the same material that, that you are that, you know, um, kind of projecting at least one more, you know, 25-point decrease and, you know, with possibility of 50 basis point decrease. But, um, as, as far as, you know, the work that we're doing here in finance, I kind of haven't really considered that, you know, specifically, um, just kind of thinking generally more about what, what we're expecting the, you know, the, the market to do, not, not the market, but like the banking industry, you know, the interest rates to do.
Sure. And then with our REIT, our REIT is down significantly, and I appreciated you mentioning that that's due to a, a cost of the unit versus, you know, that we should see that rebound. Are you, like, how confident are you that, that we'll see that, that change? That, that REIT will increase back up to being more of a flat level instead of, instead of down?
I'm probably the wrong person to ask about that. I've, I've never seen a glass half-full in my life, so.
That gives me more confidence in these numbers, actually. So that's, that's, that's good to hear.
I gotta, I gotta jump in and help him out with this one because I've said consistently for the years I was on council and a couple of years as mayor now, Steve has, and he'll be embarrassed to say that, but he has an excellent track record of doing what I believe is the hardest job for any finance director to do is predict the future in finance. Because if you could actually predict the future, you'd already be a, you know, gazillionaire and, and have left us. Uh, but you're actually, I, I think it's plus or minus 2% uh, at, at most, all the years that I've looked back on his ability to look at, shake this crystal ball. So, uh, again, we have, we have a good source of, of info. Sorry.
Thank you.
I don't think you're, you probably have more slides.
Yeah, I've got a, a few more, a few more things to go through real quickly. Utility tax, so we collect two portions of utility tax. One is on the public utilities, which are city-owned utilities, and then private utilities, which are natural gas, electricity, phone service, and cable TV. Um, this bar chart on the top here, you can see in 2021 and 2022, those bumped up a little bit, um, and now have started to come back down. It was pretty much flat in 2023 and, and slightly down now in 2024. So looking at these projections, um, what I'm proposing for utility tax is, again, using the, the projection of what we've collected and projecting that out through the end of the year, and then using that 2024 projection as the 2025 revenue expectation for private utility tax. And on the public side, we've seen about a 6.5% increase in that utility tax revenue stream. So that's what, um, I'm proposing for the, for the public utility tax is a 6.5% increase over what we're projecting for 2024. Couple other things, shared revenues, the MRSC provides a, um, a calculator based on population. It's pretty, it tends to be pretty close. So this is the shared revenues that they've, uh, predicted for 2025 for liquor profits, liquor excise tax, criminal justice, motor vehicle fuel tax, uh, and the increase in MFT and multimodal. So the, the largest three of those, the liquor revenues and motor vehicle fuel tax, um, this is what we had in 2024, 136,000 budgeted, and so far through, midway through the year, 68,000 collection on the liquor profits. And then you can see the other revenue streams there. So they're tracking pretty closely to what the expectations, uh, were set by the calculator. So that's where these shared revenues come from. REIT revenues, real estate excise tax that's collected on, uh, the sale of real estate. Uh, we are down slightly year-to-date in 2024 from what we collected last year. We're projecting to collect 1.32 million this year, and then that's what we're proposing to use as the 2025 expectation as well. Uh, other revenues, a few other revenue streams here. This is in the, the building department, uh, building revenues. You can see this is looking at January through August, this green line here for the last few years. We're down a bit compared to 2023 at 212,000 year-to-date. Uh, I talked with the building department and some of the things they've been dealing with. They've had some staffing issues this year and, uh, as well as software issues, and they've got somewhat of a backlog that they are working through now. And, um, but they believe that we should see something, something around 5% over what we, uh, what we did in 2023. So that was the basis of this revenue stream of 438,000. Fiber Department?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
So the, this chart, uh, this table that you have on screen, is that applied or issued?
Uh, those are issued. And this is, pardon me, and this is issued year-to-date through August.
Can we get applied as well?
Pardon?
Can we get an applied column?
Uh, sure, yeah. If that's, I'm, yeah, I'll work with, I'll work with building department and get that. Uh, Fiber Department, we worked directly with, um, the Fiber Business Manager to come up with these revenue estimations. And then franchise fees is just based on, on what we, what we've collected and projecting out through the end of the year. Franchise fees, uh, their primary revenue stream is, um, cable TV. We collect 5% of, uh, the gross revenues charged by the television company. I believe that's it. So, um, be happy to answer any other questions you may have. And what I might suggest, we are required to have a, a public hearing, but also we, throughout the budget process, we always encourage and accept public comment, and nothing is, nothing is off limits during those budget meetings if the public wants to, um, wants to comment. So I might suggest that the mayor could, uh, open the public hearing for anybody here tonight and then close it. We'd be done with the public hearing, but then continue to take public comment throughout the budget process through the end of the year.
I think what you're saying is it's a, it's an administrative move to, to close the public hearing, uh, which I'm happy to do after I invite the public tonight, of course, because I, I'm sure council and the public has seen there's a draft ordinance in the, uh, in the packet for the 1%. And I, I don't think we're even, I think we'll present that to council sometime in late November.
That'll, yeah, it's due to the county November 30th, so it'll be a couple of weeks prior to that.
So again, there's plenty of time for members of the public to weigh in on all this, even if I use the words closing the public hearing. But before I do use those words, does any member of the public wish to, uh, uh, address the, the council on the revenue sources? Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing on the, uh, 2025 budgeted revenue sources. And, uh, council, any other questions, comments? Okay, uh, we will move, thank you. We will move on to item seven, item 7A. This is Resolution 3167, Lodging Tax Funding Recommendations for 2025. It's a discussion item and possible action. And I think staff will start it off, but also I know, uh, LTAC Chair, Mr. Walters, will probably weigh in, and he's included a memo in the packet as well. But, uh, Mr. Coleman?
All right, thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm John Coleman, the Director of the Planning, Community, and Economic Development Department. Uh, our department, uh, helps oversee and process the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee actions. And what we're talking about today is the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee's recommendations for the 2025, um, awards. Uh, so in, for 2025, we received 29 requests totaling about, uh, $535,000, $535,268 in total. So that was what we, we requested, uh, asks from the community organizations. As I'm sure everybody is well aware, the city is looking to build a new event center to replace the now-closed transit shed, and using lodging tax, uh, funds is largely going to be paying for that project. Because of that need for the money for the, uh, event center, that's put a restriction on the amount that we're looking to use for the lodging tax, uh, awards in 2025 and then in, uh, also in the future. So, El, with that in mind, uh, LTAC Committee, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee reviewed the 29 requests and had to make some tough decisions about, um, where there's going to be some less money allocated. Of those 29 requests, LTAC recommended 23 awards totaling 7, uh, 307,800. There's also a couple of outstanding applications that, um, we're anticipating to work with. Uh, one is for, um, funding for the 2025 beer near the pier and, um, uncorked festivals, the tents for that, or whatever they might need the money for. And then additional money for design of, uh, preliminary design for the 2025 of the event center itself. There was, uh, some possible misunderstanding throughout the community earlier this week or last week, uh, that the Visitor Information Center didn't receive any funding. The, in fact, in this ordinance you can see, or this resolution, you can see that they, uh, recommended a $30,000 for the VIC in 2025. And, um, I know that Councilmember Walters was on the committee, so I don't know if you wanted to chime in with anything, or?
If you want to go now, Mr. Walters, or do you have somebody signed up to talk on this topic?
Yes, sir, I'll provide an overview.
Okay.
First of all, thank you to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee members. We met for approximately four hours over a couple of weeks to review the applications. And we spoke in general about how much funding we wanted to allocate and were willing to allocate to the event facility concept, and then also how much we wanted to allocate this year to the programs that requested money. Included a memo in the packet with all of this in narrative form, uh, that everybody can take a look at, including the public. But as a general matter, what we tried to do was take the requests from this year, ratchet them back to about what money we would have available if we were to pursue the event facility. If we do that, major, major, uh, expenses associated with that will start in 2026, although we'll have expenses for the design work that we've already done, um, and the design work that will be forthcoming, uh, this year and in 2025. But the big money will, will be necessary in 2026. So we ratcheted the, the lodging tax budget down to what we would have available after such a, a payment on a bond for that facility. And then because the payments wouldn't start until 2026, we, uh, pushed that back up a little bit to provide especially a little bit more money, uh, for the chambers marketing program and a couple of other, uh, events. Notably, we, um, we noted that, uh, the city's fireworks, Fourth of July fireworks show, uh, this in 2025 will be on a Friday, because Fourth of July is on a Friday. So we fully funded that in the amount of $15,000, which is higher than previous years. It's not the entire budgeted amount for the fireworks show, but it's higher than previous years because we anticipate it'll get good attendance. We also did not fund separately, um, the port's request for its Fourth of July concert because they submitted another application for all their other concerts, and we recommended, um, that they consolidate those in a single application in future years. And we have a representative from the port on our committee, uh, and she was favorable to that. Uh, we also did not allocate any funding for Race Week, uh, which has historically received $25,000, which is a significant chunk of the lodging tax that is available to us. Uh, Race Week is the only for-profit organization, uh, that receives money, and they make more than $25,000 on the event per the materials that they submitted. I forwarded an email to you earlier today. They're, they're not happy that they didn't receive a recommendation for funding, but that's what the committee decided. And then we definitely recognize that the Downtown Anacortes Alliance has been doing great work. However, because we are separately providing some money, uh, through the general fund to the Downtown Anacortes Alliance, we reduced their, um, lodging tax awards slightly. We would otherwise fund those 100%, but, you know, we had to make cuts in various areas. Oh, and then finally, the Oyster Runs Award, um, uh, we recommend that we figure out a way to do that without cutting checks, with, we just pay ourselves, because that's what the award is for. It's for police and fire overtime. With respect to the Chamber of Commerce requests, they had, they had two packages, and one was for $66,000, uh, for the Visitor Information Center, the restrooms, the Coastal Christmas Celebration, and Downtown Beautification. And all of that packaged together, um, comes to 66,000. About 21,000 is the Visitor Information Center, uh, 21,000 for the Coastal Christmas, 13,000 for the Downtown Beautification, and we linked to their budgeted amount. Uh, we recommended only $30,000 for that package. We did identify that the Downtown Beautification is unlikely to be a qualifying lodging tax expense, uh, because it itself doesn't bring in tourism. So we anticipate that we will, as a community, need to get more creative about how we can accomplish that, uh, but we didn't, we didn't recommend, uh, any money specifically for that component of their package, um, because we don't think it's a qualifying lodging tax expense. And then of the, uh, I think it's 183,000 that, uh, the chamber asked for for their marketing program, we recommended 125,000. And that's, uh, apparently going to be a little bit different. It's gonna have a different look in the coming year because they're down an employee and are gonna contract out some of that work. We were a little bit nervous about that, uh, but, uh, we still wanted to support the marketing program, uh, for the chamber. And then in the meeting, uh, the chamber director indicated that they would be seeking $35,000 in funding for, uh, tent rentals for the Spring Wine Fest and the Fall Beer Fest. We didn't have those applications in front of us, so they're not part of this packet. I do think the committee anticipates funding those, but we can't take action until we have the application. Importantly, as we learned, uh, a couple of weeks ago, we are not going to spend the $75,000 we allocated this year on the Cap Santa Lookout Project because, uh, the Viewpoint Project came in under budget. So we're gonna have, um, sort of that money available that we could use to, uh, support the tent rental for the Spring Wine and Fall Beer events.
All right, thank you. And I, I do appreciate the LTAC Committee's work in doing what we all know is fairly challenging as we, uh, we're moving forward with, uh, trying to develop an events facility that I certainly believe that will ultimately benefit both LTAC revenues, but it's the short-term pain for the long-term gain. But, uh, Ms. Jessica Kaiser, I have you signed up, and I'm sure you want to address the council. So you, you sign up on the piece of paper. I always make sure to let you speak. And the subject is grant funding.
Thanks, guys. Jessica Kaiser with the Anacortes Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Information Center. I'd like to say thank you to the council for faithfully funding the Anacortes Visitor Information Center over the years. I'd like to also say thank you for considering it this evening, and not only for the 7,500 visitors that will walk through the doors of this visitor center this year, but also for the 15 dedicated volunteers that run it seven days a week all year round, like John. The Anacortes Visitor Information Center is a unique visitor center. I have worked with many visitor centers over in Snohomish County, and they all struggled, slowly closing due to lack of volunteerism or lack of, or visitors. And so the fact that this visitor center has visitor count still growing and has been volunteer-ran by some of the same volunteers for over 30 years is remarkable. And I'm grateful that due to your generous grant- And I'm grateful that due to your generous grant funding, we're able to keep it open another year. I do understand that this will mean the funding has stopped for Coastal Christmas and their lights and wreaths and hanging flowers downtown. However, we're still very grateful for the funding we did receive. We'll be good stewards of the funds and stretch the dollar as far as possible, so thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else on the subject? Okay, council, this is a discussion item with possible action. Mr. Walters and Mr. Fantini?
Just to clarify a bit, that chamber package of the $66,000 ask with the $30,000 recommended award, the chamber can spend that however it would like, except for unqualified expenses. So if it is able to stretch its dollar in one direction, maybe it will have more money available in another.
Mr. Fantini?
Thank you. I just had a few questions. So I know we didn't do, when we're, just because it was mentioned, the lights downtown at Christmas, all of that, is that part of the downtown beautification expense, or was that a different area of the ask?
Mr. Coleman or Mr. Walters?
I think I had understood the light, the Christmas lights come out of planning's budget. Is that right?
Some.
Some.
So out of the planning budget, we have the lights, the decorations that go up high on the streetlights, you know, the crab pots and those orchids and fish. Downtown, there's the tree wrapping lights that is part of Coastal Christmas, as are like the wreaths downtown.
But is that part of the beautification part of the grant that I know we said? Because it was mentioned that it's not permissible under the lodging tax statute. So I was just trying to figure out what part of the chamber is the beautification, the downtown beautification? I'm just trying to get it.
So the, yes, the Chamber Director is nodding yes that that was part of the beautification.
That's part of the beautification. Okay. And there's definitely specific language in there that says that LTAC cannot fund that type of expense. Is that right?
Mr. Walters?
Yeah, the problem is with expenses that are not directly related to tourism. So Coastal Christmas being an ostensibly tourist-driven event is qualifying, but just beautifying the town is not.
Okay. And then I just had a couple of questions, and thank you to the LTAC Committee for the work that was put into this. Also, you know, as we're talking about this event center, I also wanted to thank Councilmember Young and also Mayor Matt Miller, because I know that LTAC is not a new thing. It's been chaired by a few people through the years, and getting us to this point has definitely been a group effort. So thank you, all three of you who have been LTAC chairs for getting us there. When we are talking about the funding, I know that when this previously come before, and we talked about how we're measuring the visitor levels, previously it had been that we just measure it based on what people are telling us. Is that still the way that we're measuring how many tourists are coming to town? Just we're just trusting what people say, and that, is that accurate?
Mr. Walters?
Mostly yes. We, on the committee, expressed skepticism at some of the purported numbers, and we inquired. So Mr. Lunsford is smiling. We asked Mr. Lunsford specifically about the basis for some of his estimates and other applications as well. But we don't have, in most cases, any hard basis for that data. The entities are required to report these figures, and we send them on to the state. But how they do it is kind of up to them.
Okay. And then, sorry, just a couple more. As I was looking at how we cut things, you know, obviously, we didn't do like, everybody takes a 10% cut, or everybody takes a 20% cut, or everybody takes a 30%. We kind of pick and choose where we cut things. And I just was curious about the Race Week one, because I do know that that brings a lot of folks to town. And it was mentioned that part of the basis was because it was a, it was one of the only for-profit ones, it was the only for-profit one that we have? And is that the sole reason that we're cutting the Race Week?
Mr. Walters?
No, that wasn't the sole reason. That was especially notable because it stands alone as the only for-profit event. But we do have hoteliers on the committee. And so the hoteliers really help in, in almost all cases, help really inform the decisions of the committee, because if they don't perceive overnight stays as a result of an event, that carries a lot of weight, I would say, with the committee. So especially in that case, I think that that's one of the primary rationales.
That's helpful, too. Thank you. And then, that might be it for me, actually. Yep, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Young and then Ms. Moulton. Mr. Young and then Ms. Moulton.
Now, just, you know, as a prior chair of the LTAC Committee, you know, it is a labor of love, I'll call it. You're trying to make sure that you get the most, do the most benefit for our city, inspire events and creativity within our town, and, you know, with limited dollars. But as, you know, Mr. Walters alluded to about the event center space and the requirement and what benefit that would be for the long term, part of the planning that we have implemented in, you know, previous years was to begin saving for that day that we might have something. And yes, it does require a little bit of trimming with extraordinary events that try to, you know, happen here in our town, but it is a limited budget. I just wanted to add, one of the things is it's probably, you know, even though it may not look like it, the senior statesman on the council, you know, I really appreciate the fact of the demographic that we have here in our town. Our town has a population, a large population over 50, that contribute enormously to the success in, of our town. And many of the works that we're doing are volunteers, whether it's one of the groups or whether it's, you know, one of the organizations really doing some hard work in our town. And what I appreciate about the visitor center is that everybody is not using their smartphones to do that kind of tracking, they really are not. You know, I, as much as I try to consider myself very savvy and, you know, up to date on much, you know, I still love that hometown feel that our town uniquely brings to the table, not only in the work that we're doing out and about and having the ship building, having the port, but making sure that we're not selling as many $5 trinkets as the primary function of our town. And so that requires people come in to sort of peruse and feel welcome. So, you know, I do appreciate, you know, the effort that's being put into the visitor center, so I really do applaud that. But, you know, again, I understand what we're trying to do as a city. So anyway, I just wanted to sort of put that on the table, and I'll wait for Ms. Moulton, I'm sure. Thank you.
Ms. Moulton?
Thank you. I'd like to thank the LTAC Committee for all their hard work. I know this was exceptionally difficult year, and every, almost every organization took a cut, and I thank them for all their work in bringing events and wonderful things to our town that we enjoy and also people travel for. And just a reminder that this is, this is for the greater good also, that this, ideally, we're going to have a really wonderful event center that is going to do all these things and benefit all of us together. So thank you to the applicants and for their work, and also for understanding that this is, this is necessary to pursue, to pursue our goals for the future.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. McDougal?
I just wanted to echo Ms. Moulton's comments, actually. So, you know, thank you to all the applicants for their patience, really, and the fact that this is ultimately short-term and for the longer, greater, greater and longer-term good. In the packet, it mentions the plan currently for the new event centers, to have it completed by end of 2026 or open end of 2026. Is that still the plan of record, or are we looking maybe more like '27?
You want to jump? Well, I'll go. I mean, we're still, the next phase is the interlocal, construction interlocal that we're going to work out with the port. But, Mr. Walters, you were getting ready to jump in on that one.
A port commissioner has articulated November of 2026 as a highly desirable date to be able to open the doors because it's the centennial of the Port of Anacortes. It also has the virtue of being a date certain that we could work back from, but difficult to achieve. Achievable, but not impossible, but will require significant work to achieve.
All right. Thank you.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Hubig?
Thank you. Echoing what everyone here has said, remember, tell of the applicants who are feeling a little bit squished and a little bit in pain right now, this is definitely not forever. As someone that did tourism for Anacortes for about four and a half years, I understand, Jessica, all the work that comes into this and to making sure that you don't go over budget. The Chamber is funded by this grant dollars. The marketing is funded by this grant dollars. Just because an event sells more tickets or makes more money doesn't necessarily mean that whoever's doing the promotion gets to spend more money. There is definitely a fixed amount that comes with this. And we, as a community, have been very creative in the not-so-distant past, and will have the opportunity to be creative again, because won't it be fantastic to see a beautiful, brand-new event center that's a dedicated space, that is right by the water, that has plenty of parking, that's close to downtown, that is, that is actually everything that we've talked about for the last 15, 20 years, and that we actually get to look at the people that are putting on their events in there and saying, your patience and your persistence with us is making this happen. So just thank you so much, and again, thank you to the Lodging Tax Committee. It's a lot of work to go over the paperwork, and it's a lot for the applicants to put the paperwork together. So this is, this is just one more big step in a very long marathon to get this event center up and running.
And as an added bonus, when that event center gets constructed, it'll bring in even more LTAC dollars for more great activities. And I will have to compliment the Chamber. When they put on an activity, they're very good about documenting exactly where the folks come from, so that is the gold standard when it comes to other applicants.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Young?
Barring any further comment, unless there are some that I'm missing, I make a motion to approve Resolution 3167 for the 2025 Tourism Promotion Funding Grants as recommended by the Lodging Tax Committee.
Second?
A motion by Mr. Young and a second by Mr. McDougal to approve Resolution 3167. Any additional discussion?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
And just for the record, before we all vote, I just wanted to remind the council that we anticipate $50,000 expense this year from lodging tax for the design work that's already been done on the event center, $35,000 for the chamber. Again, these aren't recommended yet, but we anticipate, just so that you know, $35,000 for the chamber for the event tents for 2025, and then probably the first tranche of design funding for the remainder of the completion of the design of the event center in the amount of a couple hundred thousand dollars. And that would come from reserves and count toward the overall total cost of the event center.
Okay. Any additional discussion? Again, motion by Mr. Young, second by Mr. McDougal, 3167. Mr. Franciac, vote please.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Hubig?
Yes.
Mr. Fantini?
Yes.
Ms. Gares?
Okay. Thank you. And next up is Item 7B. This is Ordinance 4088, 2024-2029 Capital Facilities Plan Amendment, and this is a discussion item only. This is discussion. Mr. Hoagland. And we got the whole team ready to back Mr. Hoagland up, because you don't always want him to be the only tethered goat there at the podium. Whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, members of the audience. So I wanted to, wanted to kind of revisit the CFP amendment real, just briefly. We have talked about this in Finance Committee a couple of times, and I know the Finance Committee has reported back, but we are required, the WAC that drives the CFP requirement is, it identifies that the CFP should be updated at least every two years. We generally update it every year because we have an annual budget, so we just update the CFP as part of that budget process, get the capital established, and then that rolls into our operating budget. I was talking with the Planning Department earlier in the year as we were going through this and getting, kind of getting our ducks in a row to start that CFP process, and she suggested that we just do an annual update this year because of the full comp plan update that's happening with a new comp plan that'll be in place in 2026, you know, suggesting that there may be a variety of changes that would change the capital requirements for the different departments of the city. So that's kind of how we ended up here at doing a CFP amendment rather than, rather than a full update. So next year, we'd be back to doing a full update for the 2026 CFP along with the 2026 budget, but then it would more closely align with that full comp plan update. So we have two nights scheduled for the CFP review tonight and then next Monday as well. Our city code requires that we hold a public hearing on the activity for the CFP, you know, either adopting the CFP or CFP amendment requires a two-week notice period in the newspaper and then a public hearing. So because of the timing of the notice getting to the newspaper and how the meetings lined up, we will have the public hearing next week, but we'll start the review tonight. So we have tonight scheduled most of the, most of the tax-funded funds, the general fund and transportation projects, and then next week will be the utilities and the parks fund. And again, this is what we were, what we were looking at is just an amendment to get fiscal year 2025. We wanted fiscal year 2025 to be, to be accurate, so then that would flow into the 2025 operating budgets. That'd be the capital projects that will be rolled into 25 budget and then, and then worked on next year. So the first department we're looking at is the Fiber Department. The way this chart is laid out, we have three columns here. The first column's 2024, so the current year that we were in. So again, we're operating off of the '24 through '29 CFP. The second year of the CFP, which is 2025, so this white column of 2025 is what was adopted in the original CFP adoption. And then the amended 2025, which is the work we've been doing internally with the mayor and departments to get these projects identified and accurately noticed for, for 2025. Okay, so the way, and then the, the top half of this is the funding sources for these projects. So just going down the rows, taxes, reutility tax, impact fees, grants, et cetera. So we use the same template for all of the different departments, and that's why this variety of funding sources is identified here for each of these departments. So what we have in Fiber, the first project here is the EDA grant area, and the amended 2025 CFP has 1.7 million identified as what will be budgeted for 2025. And then this last column here is 2025 change. So to try and make it easy to see what the change is between what was in the adopted year from the original adopted CFP to the amended CFP. So that's continuing that EDA program or EDA area project that is in process right now, with the plan to finish that up next year at 1.7 million, and then $35,000 in equipment for developers, and $25,000 for ad hoc projects. and $25,000 for ad hoc projects for the fiber backbone as the project is continuing. So the other two areas that were originally identified have been removed from the 2025 timeframe.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I'm having a little bit of difficulty here for, say, fiber equipment for developers. The same value is in 2025 as in amended 2025? So is that $35,000 more?
Right, no, that's fair. Yeah, no, so what's in 2025 then will—is what we've identified to actually be done. So that amount is what will flow into the 2025 operating budget.
Okay, so the values that show zero are reductions? Like for—
Yeah, like down here, right. So this 1.5 million that was originally identified along the Highway 20 corridor, that's been eliminated. So it's a $1.5 million negative change.
And that one in particular, didn't we already eliminate that a while ago?
It was still in the existing CFP. That may have been—like, that policy decision may have been made, but at least it wasn't updated in our current CFP.
Okay.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Hoagland. And Ms. You maybe wanted to say something before I pop in?
I just wanted to mention that in 2024, we had removed the 1.5 million for the Highway 20 construction and pushed it out to 2025. At this point, we're not suggesting that we move forward with that in 2025. The $35,000 for the equipment for the developers and the backbone construction and the $25,000 for the backbone construction, those are annual expenses that we're projecting. So that has happened this year. We expect that will continue next year and probably in future years as well.
So I'm wondering—thank you for that. I'm wondering about—so in 2025, initially, the EDA expansion area was at zero, and now it's at $1.7 million. Can you tell me a little bit about that?
Certainly. We put the entire EDA construction project in 2024, knowing that we are going to—out to bid for that. Everything is going fine with that. We're just not spending that entire amount this year, and the contract will continue into 2025. So that's consistent with the projected cost for that project. We just didn't use all of it, and it's continuing into 2025.
Okay, great. So just to make sure I understand, so that $3.7 million, when we look at 2024 actuals, will it be more like $2 million?
Yes, it will.
Okay, so it's a carryover?
It is.
Great, thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Could either of you check this and come back to us next week? The Highway 20 Light Manufacturing Corridor, I don't find in our current adopted CFP. And I—my memory indicates we'd already deleted it. So I'm—which would indicate it doesn't need to show up here at all because it wouldn't be a change. But I'm interested in your review of that. It doesn't have to be now.
Yep, I'm happy to go back and look at that. Thank you.
I'm reluctant to say this, but it could be the ghost of OpenGov.
That's very possible.
So just for council's edification there, with the transitioning back out of OpenGov, there's been some issues where the staff is working really hard to clean up, and this could very well be one of them.
Yeah, yeah. We are trying to identify all those bugs ahead of time, but hopefully. Any other questions about Fiber? Okay. Fire Department's got a few items identified for 2025. So the—you can see the ladder truck was identified, purchased in 2024, that has taken place. Main station upgrade was initially identified at 150,000, has been amended to 350,000. Replacement of one of the medic units at 350,000 and an additional command vehicle at 80,000.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
Just a quick question because I know that it's on our agenda later tonight. But if we are to move forward, as I hope we do, with the fire boat, would we spend that money in 2025? And should that be on capital facilities, or is that a different—
It's out further—I want to say '27, '26?
That would be on 2027?
Yeah, '26 probably. '26 or '27.
Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. I like the notes. I like the detail level of the notes, so thank you for that. I just had a question about the main fire station upgrade going from 150,000 to 350,000, more than doubling in costs. Could someone speak to that? Thank you, Chief.
Yeah, that was a change. So the initial was just for a kitchen space and bathroom addition to accommodate some of the growth we took after Proposition 1. The extra money came—there's been new technology added in or in the process of being added in at the dispatch center. It's called Locution. It's a fiber-based alerting program that allows for much faster response times. Currently, if someone's in front of a spillman screen, they can see a call come up one to four minutes before they're toned out. With the fiber-based technology, wherever they're at in the station, there'll be different lighting or noise devices that will allow staff to know there's a call happening and let them get an early jump.
So that's the $200,000 difference?
Yeah, so currently, I have a formal bid or quote from the company. And with installation for all three stations, it's about $230,000.
Okay, I'm glad to know that's for all three stations because that sounds like an awful lot of money.
It is a good chunk of money, yeah.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
So we had this discussion at the Public Works Committee earlier today. We are aware that there is more information that supports these sheets that are in the packet. At least a couple of us would like those sheets, the one sheet for each project that describes what the project does. Because otherwise, that information just is opaque. Like, even the notes that are in the presentation here is not in the packet in these sheets. But if we had those, which we have had in the past in some years, I think we would have a much better sense of what each of these projects is for.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
No, I just wanted to echo Ms. Moulton and Walters' comments. It's—I just think that additional detail is helpful for us. And I know that you guys are going to make requests, but I just think that what I'm hoping to see is just a little bit more detail so we quantify. I know that the need is there for so much stuff that we need, but the reality is, do we really have enough money? And how do we allocate that? And, you know, and I think your job is to bring your need forward as you see it as it applies to the public in the best interest of the public. And I really appreciate that. And, you know, so I'm just looking for more detail so that in our evaluation of how and what we do, that it'll allow at least me to be able to make a little bit more of an informed decision. So, thank you.
Okay. Next department, General Government. So we have a few projects here in the General Government category. This first one, the Creaseau Piling Removal. This probably looks familiar to council. It's been in the CFP for a few years now. That has been—the amount of that project has been adjusted to 250,000. Additionally, a repair of a breakwater has been added. That's over near the Fidalgo Marina at 280,000. We continue to include the ERP transition, the new ERP system in the CFP, and that's been estimated at 671,000 for next year, 2025. And the Museum Storage Workshop, the Storage and Workshop Building that's currently in process, that is estimated at 290,000 now for 2025. The Mitel phone system that the city uses is not going to be supported after 2025. So next year, we're going to start looking at replacement of that system. So we've marked 40,000 for that project next year.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
It seems like only yesterday that we got that phone system.
Couldn't agree more. Yeah.
Do we really think it's only 40,000? Will we even get a new phone system, or will we go to headsets and teams?
Yeah, exactly. That's the question. It's a great question, and we've just started talking about some of those alternatives. So I don't know that we'll actually go to new handsets or do something like you're describing with—
So how certain are we on that number?
I know this is—not the original estimate that the IT manager gave me. I think he was thinking of a full—kind of a full system replacing, you know, all 100 handsets that we have through the city. So this is just kind of a marker to get—the process going. 40,000, it's just kind of a rough estimate.
Okay. Looking forward to that one sheet that describes this project.
And again, these are exactly the kind of questions that I know the staff is hoping to get from council so we can have that kind of detail as we go through the budget work sessions.
Mayor Miller.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougall, then Mr. Walters.
On the ERP system item, I know it's a multi-year project. So is that balance, the 478 shifting entirely into 2026? Or is it going to spread across '26, '27, you think?
Yeah, it'll likely be—so that 478 is—some of that, at least, is going to be savings. The original estimate we had in there was probably high. So this is based on the current estimate for— there's two parts of that estimate. One is the annual cost, and then one is the implementation cost. And I want to say that—I'm trying to remember. I'd have to go back to my notes. I think I anticipated the implementation to take place over '25 and '26, so.
Mr. Walters.
I would just like to advocate for us to have maybe a larger discussion, maybe outside the context of the CFP, about the pile removal, the breakwater replacement, those kinds of things. Because I don't know that we've fully wrapped our arms around that as a council.
I got a—we've had a number of internal meetings on that, and I know some constituents have reached out to some council members, and we are working on getting that one for you. So, yeah, thank you. Well, we need to get it figured out because we do have a DNR timeline that we're working on. And that's why it's in the CFP now.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
To that one with the breakwater, I know you've had a lot of discussions about it. That's not the only breakwater that's out there. There's another big piece, right? And has that already been replaced? Or has that already been adjusted, improved?
That's my understanding. When you look at that whole breakwater, it surrounds, I think, like, three sides of it. And I think the majority of that has been—
Right, and that was not at our cost, right? That was at the cost of the Marina folks?
That's owned by the Fidalgo Marina Owners Association, and they have a sublease with the city. And as part of their sublease, they were required to—they're required to maintain it. The one remaining breakwater, called the North Breakwater, was left out of that sublease for one reason or another that we're trying to discover. But it seems like it's legitimately left out of that. So that's why that one remaining breakwater, although it was built at the same time as all of the rest of that breakwater, is not in the FMOA lease area. So it is their contention that it's the city's responsibility to maintain it. So that's why it's that situation.
So would it be fair to say that that's the—the rest of it has been upgraded and is safer, and that's the only piece left to complete?
Yes, the Fidalgo Marina Owners Association has done repairs to the remaining portions of the other breakwaters and to make them safe. It was in their own best interest to do so. So they wanted to do that. And it is the Fidalgo Marina. It's the owner association that is encouraging us and providing us information about the status of the one remaining breakwater and encouraging us to repair it before it has a catastrophic failure.
Okay, and then the repair that we have in here for that 280,000, that is to, I'm assuming, just bring that piece up to the same standard as the other pieces? Like, we're not going to be over-repairing it based off of— like, it's going to be consistent with what they've done, or—
Exactly. The repairs that—we base these—this repair cost is based on their repair costs doing for this similar, same work. These are getting in worse condition because it's been longer. So—and we pay prevailing wage, so, on a Public Works project. So it's going—we built that into the estimated increase in cost.
Thank you.
The rest of these—pardon? The rest of these changes down below here is— last year, when we put the facilities budget together for the government-owned buildings, we included them in General Government. This year, we've moved them out into its own category. So that's what that is, is removing the facilities projects onto its own category in the CFP.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
That would be—first of all, that would be more clear if you put zeros in the column because they're just blanks.
Oh, right, right. Good point.
But—so I take it you intended to put zeros there? Other places where there are blanks, are those intended to be zeros or no change? Like, on the next page?
Where there's blanks would—yeah, it would be zeros.
Zeros, okay, all right.
Oops, sorry, sorry.
Okay. So pedestrian—pedestrian link between downtown and Marina, that was, I think, a high-priority project for us. Are you proposing to move that into a different category?
Yeah.
Or just delete it?
Right, that was moved into the transportation category.
Okay, I assume we'll come to it.
Yeah, in just a few minutes.
Okay.
So that's it for General Government. If there's no more questions about that, we can move on. I think the next category is the Public Works Operations. Sorry, bear with me. All right. So looking at the—this column, column rate here, amended 2025, an additional vehicle for the City Hall fleet. We had 50,000 in the initial CFP identified for an Ops pool car, and that requirement has been eliminated. So that should be a zero right there. The solar panel array on the Ops building at 150,000 has also been removed from the plan, so that should also be a zero right here. An additional Ops facilities truck has been increased from an estimated 70,000 to 85,000. Dropping down to facility repairs. So we've identified $250,000 for the city facility maintenance repairs. So it's changed from what we did in last year. So what we've done—last year, we identified $50,000 for each of the different city buildings. Talking with Public Works this year and developing the budget, what they would prefer to do is to have a $250,000 allocation that would take care of the general routine things that facilities does year to year and then identify the additional projects that need to be worked. And that's what's identified here. So 250,000 for that general routine stuff that facilities does. And then 75,000 for the library AC handler, AC air handler. And then $80,000 to do a city facility condition assessment. Those are both—oh, all three of those. Those are both new projects in the CFP.
Mayor—
The 250—
Mr. Walters.
Is the Public Works City Facility Condition Assessment different— different from the facilities master plan that we had previously heard about? Is that a different project?
It is. So we took the facilities master plan out. And we're going to do a condition assessment instead and do the kind of master planning in-house. We've talked to other facilities departments in other cities. And getting the condition assessment is a relatively less expensive thing. If you do a master planning process, you really are looking at like, where should we buy more property and build bigger things? And we just felt like we just needed to take care of what we have and get that in front of council. And then we'll in-house try to prioritize what needs to do, what we need to do first. If it's windows, roofs, HVAC systems, that type of thing. And so we have a more educated assessment of our facilities as they stand today. Not to expand them or shrink them or anything else.
Not to expand, or, I mean, we might have a need to expand or shrink. That wouldn't get covered by the condition assessment. Would we do that work, though, in-house?
Yes.
Okay. And would that in-house work still yield a document for us to review? Okay. And is there detail, perhaps in the one sheets for each project, that provides backup for the $250,000 in city facility maintenance repairs? Because we have gone, we've been all over the map on this line item.
Yeah. The, I can give you a list. So it's in the CFP so that we can use REIT money to fund some, the eligible REIT thing. The 250,000 will basically cover our regular, like, fire system inspections, our electrical inspections, just the standard annual things that we do as a facilities division. So it doesn't cover everything because the utilities are also in there for their costs for utility facilities.
Okay. So that backup does exist?
Yes, there's still backup, yeah.
Okay. Will we see that as part of the sheet associated with the project? Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thanks. So I was comparing that to that $250,000. And I think it's $50,000 per facility. So that is assuming that 250 times, that's five facilities that covers. Or is that the whole? Because I'm looking at the one we got in our packet. And it's, there's, you know, listed our senior center, City Hall, fire department, library, museum, police department, parks. So will we get the, will we get just a basic breakdown of what facilities that $250,000 covers?
Yeah, I think that would be apparent when we provide the, you know, the list of those items that this would cover. You'd, I mean, some of that stuff, like, we all hire, you know, one vendor to cover all of the different facilities, you know, like pest control or, you know, whatever. But then there are some things that are specific to the facilities. But I think most of that would be, you'd be able to identify from that detail. So I'm not sure if I'm answering your question or.
Yeah, so my question was, I guess, this is all going to sort of even out. Like, this $250,000 total came from something that was taken out of the prior page on your presentation.
Yeah. So what we did when finance met with Public Works and went through this process, we actually pulled up the detailed, the detailed accounts in the accounting system and went through and looked like, okay, what is it that, you know, what is it that you're spending money on every year in these, you know, main categories? Professional services and, you know, maintenance and repairs. And what we, looking at line by line, that's what it drove out, was most of it is just routine stuff. Calling electricians, calling, you know, just HVAC people, just routine stuff that needs to get taken care of any year. And it's, you know, it's real money. 250,000 is about what we're trending for this year. And that's roughly where we're at from year to year. When you take out those other, you know, one-time things like, you know, fencing or boiler replacement or, you know, something like that. That 250,000 mark is about where we're at.
Okay, great. That's helpful. Thank you.
Mayor.
Mr. Fantini.
Just as I'm looking at the end with your explanations, it seems like this is a little, or a lot, different than we've done it in the past. But I think, just from my perspective, I think this way is a much better way to get what the council has asked for many times over, which is keeping things as accurate and true as possible instead of kind of having all these things flying in the sky. Like, this is, seems to me, a much better manageable way. So I just, I appreciate the effort and the change of approach.
Page two of operations. This is the Police Court Facility for HVAC rebuild and replace, 160,000. The PD server room, air conditioning. Right now, there's two portable units in there. They'd like to put a more permanent solution in that server room. That's estimated at 30,000. And then these next three are associated with the wastewater, different buildings, re-roofing those different buildings. And these would be paid for out of the utility itself, not out of, not out of REIT. And then the bottom line, City Hall seagull mitigation. Still struggling with the seagulls nesting on the roof. So, and once they're done with their annual nesting, we'd like to try and figure that out.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I, for one, would be in favor of doing that as soon as possible. You know, whenever that season ends, with the spikes and the owls and the whatever, and the mirrors and the windmills, whatever is necessary, can we buy in bulk and provide to other buildings nearby as well? I mean, holy smokes. Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Just as a bit of added comedy to that, you know, of course, parked my car back by the building and it came out.
Don't do it. Don't do it.
It had gone from gray to white. And I wasn't sure what had happened. Anyway, and I saw a variety of other cars. So it became kind of amusing to go around the city as I was traveling.
It's not amusing.
Yeah, it was terrible. Anyway, but I thought I'd say that. So I'm an advocate for that as well. Thank you.
Appreciate, I know Mr. Rayham appreciates council support on that because he will be on a mission should council ultimately prove this.
That is it for the public works operations. If no other questions, we can move to our next item. It's in transportation. So starting, first item is 16th Street Improvements. That's 2.3 million. That's consistent with the adopted CFP. So 17th and Q, 260,000. That was pushed to a future year. Sorry. Likewise, ADA ramps. So there were a number of projects that we generally have in the transportation budget. ADA ramps, sidewalk construction, pavement overlays. So because of the work on Commercial Avenue that we're trying to get done next year, the 12th and Commercial Roundabout, and then the repaving from 13th Street up to 34th, all of those resources have been combined and pushed towards those projects on Commercial Avenue. Commercial, I'm sorry, Fidalgo Bay Reconstruction, $1 million. It's a project that will be done in partnership with Samish. Kansas Avenue, we put 100,000 in the budget in 2025. This is, yeah, so this is, this is a project that would require additional funding in the following year. I believe 1.5 is what would be required in 2026. We can talk more about that in the future. But that 100,000 would give the public works what they need to get that project started. And then once that project is started, it would give them the ability to go out and look for grants to get that project completed.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
I just wanted to talk about this one a little bit. This is the only Ward III project on here. But it's also one that we've seen pushed off quite a bit. And as I'm reading this, I just want to make sure that we're looking at the scope of this, of this project correctly. You know, Kansas Avenue, I know council member Moulton, Walters, myself, I think, Public Works Director Remain, we've all been up there. We know that that Kansas Avenue, all the way, not just from, not just from Oaks and 12th to Fourth Street, but all the way up through there, is kind of a wild, winding path. There's also currently a lot of safety issues in that area. And my concern, when I see this, is that we're talking about going from West Second to West Fourth. But that's going to leave out a significant part of what I would call the unsafe area where a lot of families, a lot of seniors walk. Are we planning to just only do those safe sidewalks through West Second to West Fourth? Or can you talk to me a little bit about that scope? Because I think this is a very big project that's ripe for doing. There's been a lot of development that's happened through Rock Ridge. But we're pretty much built out in that area now, with the exception of a lot here and there. So I would really like to see us take a full approach on Kansas Avenue instead of kind of piecemealing it bit by bit. So can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, the original thought when we put this in the CFP was to just open K, or open up Kansas. And if you look at the hodgepodge of how that road is just kind of winds and goes through, there's encroachments on it in the right of way. We need to take a further step back because you build it, they will come. So if we open that last segment of Kansas, they will, all vehicles that go all the way up to Rock Ridge are going to funnel right through that, but right through Kansas. So yes, the 100,000 is, originally, we were like, oh, yeah, we're just, we're just going to open it up. But it's likely a little bit more than that with 100,000. We need to look at the downstream impacts of opening that one block. So that, our plan is to study it next year, get into some preliminary design with 100,000.
Okay.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I completely echo Mr. Fantini's comments. We've had a number of conversations about this in the Public Works Committee. But when you're building a road, you're also building stormwater infrastructure and maybe changing sewer infrastructure. I mean, a whole lot of things may come together. And so I would be hopeful that we could be addressing all of those things at once, or at least looking at the cost of that and then letting council decide what it wants to fund. Because the West numbered streets have a lot of needs. Stormwater is one of those needs. Stormwater affects the ability for any future development up there. Maybe the planning exercise associated with that is actually more than 100,000. Definitely completely agree that you can't just open up the release valve and let the cars race through there. But we also need to get that opened up because we have heard compelling public comment from people that point out so many driveways are passed by, especially what used to be the circuitous route through the neighborhood. And many fewer will be passed once we get it open. But we just need to do it in a safe way and not miss an opportunity to improve stormwater infrastructure and the other infrastructure there. So now, we're only looking at the transportation section of the CFP. But are you, are you considering doing more than that as part of the planning exercise for this, for this project?
If we go with curb and gutter all along Kansas, you're going to need stormwater. There isn't any infrastructure there now.
Yeah. But I mean, that is also a multi-million dollar project. And how are we, how are we going to scope this? And how are we going to determine the appropriate scope?
So the 100,000 will get us to a few options that I think.
Conceptual level?
Yeah, that we'll need to discuss with council. Because this is a big ticket item to fix the entirety of Kansas. Initially, we were thinking just that one block and we're good. That's probably not going to work out. So we're going to, we'll probably bring that. And then we'll bring other ideas and options of how we can basically kind of fix the multiple issues along Kansas. The biggest issue is it's encroached on all sides in different ways. And even at the intersections, it's, there's a lot of work there. So, but we need to, we need to look at it. And 100,000 will go a long way to look at the whole corridor.
And the stormwater issues, I imagine, could be somewhat paid for by the stormwater utility. Not that it's flush with cash, but have some contribution. Does that be the case?
A lot better than the general fund, yeah. So you can use the stormwater funds to build the stormwater infrastructure in a real project.
Yeah. But are we planning for that here? Because this looks like only general revenue and REIT.
This part is, yeah. Just because we're, the whole purpose is to build the transportation project. But then if we build curb and gutter transportation project, you're into stormwater.
Okay. Well, I was asking about the design side. But maybe the design side of the stormwater improvements is pretty small and not worth worrying about?
I wouldn't worry about it now. No, we're not going to do stormwater design with 100,000.
Okay. Just concepts?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okey-dokey. Next item, Q Avenue Pedestrian Improvements, 448,000. I believe this is a project we're doing in conjunction with the port over near Safeway. As I mentioned, the sidewalk budget of 200,000 is being allocated towards the Commercial Avenue projects for next year. Page two, Transportation. So the annual pavement maintenance, that 1.8 million, we remove that to allocate eligible funding to these two projects. The, the intersection of 3, 3 million and 50 is the intersection at Commercial and 12th. And then 3.5 million of overlay from 14th to 34th Street. There's also a pedestrian crossing identified at 32nd Street near historic park. Another crossing on T Avenue where the Tommy Thompson truck crosses. 100,000 allocated for that. And then a pedestrian crossing on 22nd Street up near the pool. There's a, the pool is up there and then there's a bus stop and the kids coming over from the high school. So that's what that 50,000 would be for, for that pedestrian improvements right there. I believe that's the end of transportation. So.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
The 12th and Commercial Roundabout, now signalized intersection, otherwise known as Phase One Commercial Avenue from 11th to 13th. I really feel like we could improve a lot of the titles of some of these projects. We had a discussion in the Public Works Committee about what the general revenue or general revenue and REIT cost of that project is. And I think the answer was probably in the couple hundred thousand range, even though the total cost of the project is 3 million. That's another thing that's not really possible to be seen on this, on this sheet. But would be possible if we had the one sheets for the project.
Right, right. And we actually have a summary sheet that shows a summary of the 2025 requests, you know, broken down by those different resources. That might be helpful for council. We can provide that as well. Yeah.
And so then the ninth to R project, the one that we said was moving, the pedestrian link between downtown and the Marina, which was 9th Street, is that one on here? Because I still don't. I don't see that one.
We removed it from the general government. We were supposed to add it here. That one, as well as the Streetscapes, the Downtown and of course Alliance, they, both of those two are supposed to be here. So we'll, we'll add those.
Okay, so those will come back. Okay. And then the question that I had asked in the Public Works Committee, we've got the port pursuing the West Basin Plan, which will have a realignment of the corner of 9th and R. And so what I had asked Public Works to think about, and we can talk about it in our Port City Liaison Committee meeting tomorrow, is does that, is there any benefit to either the city or the port to have that project on our CFP? Not because we would fund it, but because maybe we could seek grant funding. And I don't, I don't know if we arrived at an answer or not. But if we could think about it, we've got time to add it if we wanted to. I just tend to think that it's a project the community needs. It helps move the event center forward. It helps the port. So if there's, if there's opportunity to achieve grant money that we couldn't use on our other priorities, I would be supportive of putting it on the list. But it is their project, so I wouldn't want it competing with our.
We plan to ask them tomorrow if that's of any benefit. They haven't brought it up to date, but it's worth raising.
Yeah. Thank you.
I think that's all we have for tonight. Next, next week, we're planning on going through the Parks Department CFP and then the Utilities CFP. So thank you for your time tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ogland. And team, we'll move on to item seven C, a support security grant to purchase a public safety boat for the Anacortes Fire Department. It's a discussion item, possible action. Chief Harris.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Miller, members of council. Tonight, we want to address some of the questions and concerns that came up at the council meeting two weeks ago. And so I'll just get started and we'll start with working on identifying the need or what the problem is. As I pointed out, was there's, there are six marinas in the city limits with over twenty-four hundred marina slips. Some are covered. Additionally, there's eight thousand boats launched, and that's just between Cap Sani and Skyline each year, and somewhere over seventeen thousand guest boater nights each year between those major marinas. Also here in Anacortes, we have the Washington State and the Skagit County ferry systems and a lot of commercial operations such as the Cruise Lines, Island Adventures, brings in thirty thousand passengers annually. Our two refineries bring a tremendous amount of shipping and some danger to our channels, and along with Dakota Creek and multiple other waterfront industries and commerce. I think there was some confusion when we talked about the fourteen islands two weeks ago. I just wanted to point out there were some questions that came up about, you know, San Juan and island counties, but those weren't the islands we were talking about. We were talking about the fourteen in Skagit County and that are immediately adjacent to Fidalgo Island and that fall within our primary response zones. So when someone calls nine one one with a medical problem, we're the ones dispatched to any of those locations. So since 2019, we've had five hundred and fifty-one documented EMS response calls to those islands. The vast majority go to Gwemas Island, but you'll also see about fifty to some of the other islands that don't have ferry service or docks. One thing with that, about fifteen percent of those calls to Gwemas Island happen after hours, which is starting to create more and more issues. Currently, Skagit County no longer wishes to provide the after hour service. So we're currently in, in talks with private contractors to do some of that. And when they do, if we call them, whether they are able to assemble the crew or not, there'll be a fifteen hundred dollar charge. Currently, that's being handled by the county EMS for EMS calls, but for fire and rescue calls, that would fall to Anacortes.
Mr. Walters.
Just to stop you here, I think that the last time I checked, the summertime population of Gwemas Island was in excess of three thousand people. It's a pretty significant number to not have access to when the ferry is out or just overnight. I don't feel very comfortable not having access to all of those people within our service area, especially when they're doing summertime things that are maybe more dangerous than the wintertime things.
Sure, and we certainly don't either, which is one of the reasons we're here, you know, tonight. And then, and we are, we're still in talks with, with the ferry service in the short term. Like, for example, tonight, they're doing, undergoing maintenance tonight, there's no ferry service at all. So we're. So beyond those, just along the city of Anacortes waterfront, we just kind of took a, took a cruise around and took some photos of some of the larger houses and things that I think are worth talking about tonight. So here you'll see photos of Dakota Creek. I'm drawing a blank, I guess Sebastian Stewart, but the old cannery building that comes off of Old Town are two of our issues. We'll talk more about that one just a little bit. Here you're going to see Trident, the county ferry terminal, and the Shannon Point Seafoods. Again, you'll notice that a lot of the access to those buildings is going to come from the waterfront only. When firefighting operations, it's important, depending on how the fire is, where we can access, where we can put fire streams, where we can rescue people from. And currently, a lot of our facilities, or many of our facilities, don't have anything if we can't access from the water. And this is a photo of the Anacortes Marina and some of the covered docks, which create another set of challenges. But I wanted this photo of the, that old cannery building, just to show that this particular building, which is in operation today and conducts business daily, has only three sides of access, or three sides can only be accessed from the water. And the land based side has a very small lane that we really can't get a fire engine into anyway. So it's just one example of a spot in town where this, this boat, or a boat, could be critical. Just again, some aerial views of, just to kind of show the scope of a couple of our larger marinas. Here you're looking, of course, at the Anacortes with Cap Sani in the behind, and then a different view of Cap Sani looking out towards the marinas, to see the number of boats. And in a little bit, I'm going to show a picture of an Everett incident, and I kind of want to compare that to how our marinas are laid out. Again, this is Skyline Marina. And this is another picture of the Anacortes Marina, but really I put this photo in to talk about the refineries in the distance. While the refineries aren't in the city of Anacortes, they're certainly, we border them, and they create a whole set of challenges. But what I really want to discuss here is the rapid response, should there be an oil spill and things like that? Having a staffed boat that we can operate out of rapidly and able to put down booms or absorbent and things like that in the water may very well protect some of our infrastructure and city property.
Miller. Mr. Walters.
And that would not be an ordinary function of the fire department, though, right? Because they, they, the refineries have their own apparatus and contractors that do that work.
They certainly do. But they again have the, and as we discussed before, like say there was, say it needed to be a waterborne operation, the refinery's boats are here in Anacortes as well. For them to operate them, they have to stop what they're doing, drive over here, get in their boats and leave, whereas we have the ability to simply drive over to a dock or whichever dock were to be on and drive out. But yeah, no, it wouldn't be our primary function, but again, hazmat's one of the things that we do do. I'm here to kind of, again, over the last few years, you'll see between twelve and fifteen either water rescue or boat fire incidents that have happened that we have responded to. And it depends, so I would say that the numbers have been rising and we're on pace to probably hit fifteen or sixteen again this year. But one thing I want to point out is while that number may not seem huge, twelve or fifteen a year of any particular incident, a lot of the things we do, such as rope rescues, confined space rescues, vehicle extrications, and even building fires, happen at that rate or lower, yet we're expected to be able to handle them competently and efficiently when they do come up.
Mayor.
Ms. Bolton.
Thank you. Thanks, Chief Harris. I'm having trouble picturing a water and ice rescue. Seems like there have been a few over the last years. Could you describe maybe one of those?
Say that again.
A water and ice rescue was one of the categories?
Yeah, so that's a lump. It's going to be water or ice. It's not, so I don't believe we responded to any ice rescues last year, although we did have concerns when people were skating out on the, and we're dealing with that as well. But the water rescue, I know that we had one victim off the docks down at Cap Sani that was rescued, it was a throw rope. Just a few weeks ago, we had a paddleboarder out in the Gwemas Channel that needed help, that seems along those lines.
Sure, that totally makes sense to me, but I thought that there was an ice section that was its, on its own, apart from water. So I was just curious about that. But I guess it goes back to your skating thing. I don't know, it was just hard for me to picture on the slide.
No, I think they're just lumped together. What, those are INFERS codes, that's just national reporting codes, and they all get lumped into Giant, and that's how we pull our data out of the system.
Okay, but there were two categories, sorry to go on about this. One was water, ice, and one was water.
Back up a slide.
On the slide. The prior slide to what you showed us.
That's, I don't know how to answer that question. It's one of the, you're not incorrect, INFERS is cumbersome in the fact that when we go in to enter a report, one lieutenant may enter it one way and one may enter the other. So I would lump those two together. There are probably deeper definitions, but when the calls are happening, that's how they get entered.
Okay. Thank you.
Again, this next slide just shows a few local incidents that have occurred. The one at the top there is at the Anacortes Marina a number of years ago. At the bottom there, you'll see the first Tommy Thompson trestle fire, and then the other one was a boat off the skyline, coastline.
Miller. Mr. Yud.
Thank you, Chief. Got a question. I wasn't here that week, you know, but I guess we're talking about roughly out of us about a hundred and fifty thousand. And how many years does a boat like that last for use?
The boat that we're looking to purchase?
Right.
Yeah, so the, the whole of the boat itself is an aluminum boat and has, I won't say indefinite, but a significant lifespan, fifty plus years. It's the things, the motors and electronics, we're looking at a ten to fifteen, or about a fifteen year replacement cycle on those.
Okay, so, yeah, no, that answers my question. Could it sort of give the lifeline and the cost per year? And add, you know, for me, my measurement was not only the utility, as I'm sure you guys can, but all was that cost associated with it, the utility years associated with that. And then given the amount of rescues, or projected things that may, you may need to use it for, dividing it by that gave me a sort of a cost per incident. And that was what I thought was important. So, okay, you've answered my question. Thank you.
This slide shows a couple of incidents again. One there with the, you'll see the, the rubber raft up in the top. That was an incident in Washington Park back in 2022. In this instance, it was a dog had fallen over and was injured, and the crews determined that it was the safest and best for the dog and the crews to take him out or out via the boat. Again, we've had, it's before my time, but there have been similar incidents up off of Cap Sani where people have fallen in. I use that as an illustration to show, again, and the cliff face you see there at the bottom, if people are in the water in spots like that, very difficult to get to from the top, much easier from the bottom. And again, we do have a lot of, our parks and forest lands do border up against the, the ocean at points. And there's a time, if you see slope and wind, will depend on how we can get down to those fires. There are small times when a boat helps with those fires as well. Again, these are just a few, a quick Google search showed a few Anacortes and La Conner and Bellingham, significant incidents that have occurred over the past dozen years or so. These are just the ones that popped up on a Google search. And I put these in here just to show that, again, Marina fires and marine incidents aren't a remote possibility that might happen someday. They're things that do happen here, they're things that will happen here. And we've been lucky that we haven't had a catastrophic event in our marinas. But it's, it's every day, it's a possibility, and those are the sorts of things that we're looking to mitigate.
Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters.
These events were accidental fires.
I believe so.
We also have to recognize the possibility of, the potential for arson. I mean, we, we've had that on the trestle now twice. And I think it was just maybe two years ago that there was a Ballard fire that was determined, in a marina, that was determined to be arson, wiped out a lot of boats. I don't, I don't, I don't think we can discount that, that possibility.
Sure. And this is one I mentioned earlier I want to talk about, and this is a fire that occurred in Everett. And those docks to me look very similar to how we're, we're laid out. And I think most marinas are laid out similarly. But what I really want to point out there is if you look down just on the land side of where the fire is at, you can see the firefighters operating a manual hand line. They're doing a great job there protecting the boats from their direction, but just based on, that's not a particularly windy day, those are good conditions, yet still they would be unable to physically or safely move down that dock's path. Without the ability to get fire streams on the, on the water side of where the fire is, that fire will continue unchecked until somebody stops it or it runs out of boats to burn. So, and that's one of the issues, again, EMS is a huge part of what we do, but the, the potential for catastrophic dollar or life loss in our marinas is significant, and not having the ability to get on the other side of those boats is huge. And to, currently to deal with all the situations or potential situations I showed you, this is what we're operating today, an eighteen foot, what I'll call a rubber raft. It's nearly thirty years old. And when we purchased it back in 22, the intent was never for that to be our final product. It was a stopgap. It became available for just a few thousand dollars, gave us an opportunity to make some difference, as well as to begin to train and understand how to operate in the water. I mean, it has no firefighting abilities and it has no safe way to transport a patient. And it's honestly been a little bit, for the cost of the boat, it's been a little bit of expensive to maintain. Pulling records from both our shop and from North Harbor Diesel, in the three summers it's been in service, it's cost about seventeen thousand dollars in maintenance. Talking to Munson, they would be shocked if we reached anywhere near that, even on the more expensive boat, at least in the first ten years or so. Again, we don't know how this boat was maintained. It's had problems, a bilge pump, the handles have broken off, the rubber is just old and aged. So it's, it's reached the end of its life regardless of what we do here tonight. One question that came up, that was a great one two weeks ago, was insurance. And I'll be honest, it wasn't something, I assumed this would be covered under our regular pool insurance, and that is not the case. We have reached out to several agents looking for quotes. We've yet to receive a correct one or a complete one, but we're, we're looking somewhere ten, twelve, potentially fifteen thousand dollars if it's deemed a commercial vessel. I think there's still some, I think there's some interpretations that we're missing. We'll be working with that. And assuming that this is approved tonight to accept the grant, before we bring you a purchase contract in a few months, we'll make sure that we have true numbers with, with true quotes before we get that far. Again, several questions came up in the meeting and then again in emails over the last week, talking about recommended maintenance and things like that. And I sent this out to emails to at least some of you over the last day or two. This is what came from Munson for the particular boat that we've talked about, the thirty-six footer. And it kind of lines up very closely with what the North Harbor quotes were that we talked about two weeks ago. Basically, they're on one hundred, three hundred and thousand hour cycles, which I think, and I explained in a, in a note to you all, I'm assuming about a hundred hours of normal use is going to be about a year. The first couple of years, I imagine, will be a little bit more than that when it's new and we're training and things like that. But I think that's a fairly reasonable expectation. That's why I put it into years. And basically, in a ten year cycle, if we follow all the maintenance recommendations, it should come up to about thirty-five thousand. Obviously, the three and ten year marks are going to be steeper, but it averages out to about thirty-five hundred a year for routine maintenance. Again, I think I mentioned, there's going to be little things that come up. I would assume the five to six thousand dollars in true cost would be more, would be realistic, especially after a year or two.
Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters.
Yeah, I think that some of the skepticism you heard from council last time was around the maintenance costs, but I think what we're talking about here is the maintenance schedule, the preventative maintenance, and what other people experience, including our constituents who have chatted with us about this, is all the other boat things that go wrong. I don't have a boat, don't want a boat, remind my wife constantly why we don't want a boat. And, and I think that it's, it's those unexpected repairs that wouldn't be part of this predictable schedule that people were concerned about.
And I, and I agree, there's, there's going to be some of that. I can't pretend there won't be. But one thing I would say to alleviate some of that concern is how we operate. Same thing with, like, I'll use an example, at home I have a chainsaw. Every fall I take it out before hunting season, and it may or may not start. Eventually, I get it started. Our crews go out every day and do preventative maintenance and checks, and they start every saw, they start everything, and the same will happen with this. And that, that eliminates a lot of those little things. We catch you the things when they're small. And again, it'll be seen near daily, at least once or twice, twice a week, I think, would be the routine maintenance on the boat, because it's not in the station. A lot of those things that a recreational boat owner experiences, I don't believe will be experiencing, at least not on the level that some are.
And I think that, that is a really important distinction in the way you, you will operate the boat versus the way recreational boater operates the boat, the constant use of the boat, being able to catch maybe early some things, and the, the training checklists, the protocols that you'll have to be able to mitigate some of those things. I think that that's an important distinction.
One other question that came up quite a bit during emails and things like that is, you know, other partners and other resources available to us. Obviously, the, out in the waterways, it is the Coast Guard's jurisdiction. They're also forty-five minutes to an hour away by boat, no matter what. We have a lot, we do have a lot of air resources, whether it's military or civilian, to help us with medical calls. The only problem with those is when they're very weather dependent, they're also very expensive. So for a citizen to have a twenty-five thousand dollar bill for, say, a sprained knee, we can do it, but it's not necessarily in everybody's best interest. So there, there's reasons to and to not use the air assets. There's also lots of other, if people, we had one email from a citizen this week talking about the boats in the marina that could potentially be utilized for some of the same things that we do. And there's, and, and one way that's true, in the fact, like I said, the refineries have fireboats in the refinery, or excuse me, in our, in our marina. But again, talking to the fire chief out there, they may or may not be able to shut down the operation, because again, they're not firefighters, they're people that are, it's a, I would, what do you call it, a fire brigade? It's, it's regular workers that have some other training. So they have to be relieved from their shift, they have to get permission to leave, to come help us. Anyway, we're looking at close to an hour, in his opinion, before they would be able to help. Most of the other resources out there- Most of the other resources out there, there's a lot of emergency response-looking boats that are designed for spills and things like that. Virtually, none of those have any firefighting capabilities, none of them have any sort of patient compartmentation. And also, it's a time thing. We talked about during our level of service during Prop 1, everything we do is about how quickly we can get to a medical emergency or a fire, having to contract or wait for civilians to come from home to get their boats out, not to mention, like, we talked about how we maintain our equipment. We know it's going to start every time. We also know we can control our training levels. Asking our crews to get into a boat in poor weather with someone who we don't train with on a regular basis, or how they maintain their equipment, isn't necessarily the best thing to do either.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
One of my constituents suggested that the county has a boat in the water that could be available to us. Is, is that true?
So the Yakima, not Yakima, Skagit County sheriffs have a boat with a fire pump that's in La Conner currently. Two years ago, I tried to get with the sheriff's department to get them to bring it back to here with some sort of a partnership so that we could either pay for some of their maintenance. And they really were unwilling to allow us to operate their boat. And then we could, they would come and get us and we could ride with them. But again, that's the delay, because where the deputy is at to go get the boat versus then drive it from La Conner to here, yes, there's a boat. In fact, that's, I believe that's the boat you seen in that Anacortes photo earlier. It's just when it would get here, if it would get here, is the concern.
What do they use that boat for?
I don't know the answer to that question. I know they bring it out during the 4th of July. It's usually out patrolling, so it's here then, but I assume they do marine patrols and things like that, but I don't know the answer.
Okay.
Mr. Young.
Would you elaborate a little bit more, Chief, on when, in the budget impact, saying that we're working on a cost share with the Department of EMS? And would you just sort of elaborate a little bit more on that?
Yeah, it's actually coming up in just a slide or two from now, I'll get to that if you can.
Okay, no, that, that's perfect. Thank you.
Yep, so basically, our, our, our staff recommendation is that we, even prior to the grant, is that we acquire a larger vessel that has fire and EMS capabilities to ensure that our firefighters and our citizens are safe in whatever seasons or weather conditions they're facing, an enclosed cabin for patient transportation. And one note there, there was a question, I can't remember who asked, two weeks ago, whether we could bill for transport in the boat. And it does look like there is potential for that, depending on, it would have to be licensed as, as an ambulance, which is certainly doable, and we'll just have to, as we dig deeper into that, whether that costs out or not. Because even our ground ambulances take a tremendous amount of equipment that may or may not be, be worthwhile, but we'll be looking into that. We just found that out this afternoon, that it is possible. Bring in storage for our equipment. Right now, there's really, anything on that boat is fair game, anyone can walk away with it, so that's, that's important. We can't keep very much on it. And so we have to take it with us when we go, the medical equipment's not on it. I think we lost a flare gun, if I'm not mistaken, a year or so ago. Minor, but still, it's gone. And it needs to be able to land on islands where no docks exist. As we discussed two weeks ago, we're looking at something about 36 feet long with an enclosed cabin that's got secure places to put a patient, and the ability to fight fire and to land on beaches. With those things in mind, we applied for the port security grant back in June, knowing it was going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $700,000. That was, I won't say, it wasn't a made-up number, it was based off of quotes, but it wasn't on a particular boat. With that, the federal share was 75%, or about 525, and our local contribution would be 25%, about 175. Since we spoke last, the county commissioners have given verbal permission to Skagit EMS to work on paperwork that there would cover $75,000 of our initial upfront costs. And it's my understanding is of today, the port commissioners have directed port staff to start to work on an agreement with us that would give us a no-cost mortgage of a fireboat in exchange for trainings, which I anticipate being preparedness or fire suppression trainings or CPR, things along those lines. So that was, that was good news, I thought. And again, the 36-foot boat that we've showed you, we would come in right about 680. This is that example from Cherry Point. Again, this is, I believe, also a 36-foot boat, very similar to what we'd be looking at. The next photo is just an example of, just the same sort of boat, just showing you the landing craft so we can get onto beaches. It's also a way for folks to be rescued in the water and things like that. And with that, happy to answer any other questions you may have.
All right, well, you got a few questions, but I'm sure counsel has a few more, or maybe you've answered them all. Counsel.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
Thank you very much for that presentation. I know we talked extensively about this in our, our public safety committee meeting as well. Couple of things for me that, that have leaned me towards voting to approve this is there's clearly a need here for, for this. And I think it's a growing need. You know, we have Stabberts now that is starting to do a lot of work over there, and we see some boats come in and out over there, and it's industrial type of work. We have a big industrial waterfront work that are doing, there's a big need and it's growing. And from what I've heard from our comprehensive plan, it seems like we're going to be encouraging that growth. So it's not like Anacortes is going to be shrinking the amount of need that we have for this, for this type of vessel. The other thing that I would say is, I, I appreciate you say, the clarity of that, you know, the way that you'll take care of the boat is different than how a recreational user would take care of the boat. And as somebody that works directly next door to the fire department, I can definitely say that taking care of equipment is something that happens all the time. And so I, I definitely feel that would be a, we'd catch those types of things early or whatnot. The other thing for me, because I, I did struggle with this, because anytime you're going to spend money, it's, it's like, ah! But I, I just come back to, is there going to be a better opportunity for our citizens to pay for something like this and have this? If we, if we see clearly, as has been articulated from you, that there is a need here, and we say no to this grant, and we don't fund the additional part, is there ever going to be a time when we're going to have this kind of opportunity? And I think the answer to that is probably no. So I think that makes this opportunity even more valuable. I also appreciate the fact that you're still engaged with conversations with the county on possibly offsetting some of this initial cost as well. I know it's not a guarantee, but I appreciate that that conversation is happening. But at the end of the day, I come down that I, I do think the need is clearly articulated, the opportunity is positive, and we did just have a levy that voted to increase and, to fund our, our public safety even more so than it had been. And I, I know budgets are creative things and they, they move around, but I know we haven't spent what we've collected so far with that levy, and that was a levy that was voted on to improve public safety. So again, not a budget expert, but I, I feel like this is an expense that I can justify to our, to, to my constituents. I, I truly do. The other thing that I would say is, you know, we see the pictures of the boat, and the guys and gals are out there already doing a lot of this work. I don't anticipate that they would be deterred from continuing to do this work, even if we didn't vote to approve this boat. But I think we kind of owe it to those that are protecting our well-being and protecting our buildings to, to give them the best equipment available. If there, if this wasn't a need, if we weren't an island, if we didn't have all of this type of industry on the island, if we weren't increasing what we're doing at the marinas, I would have to think harder about this. But to me, I, I can justify this, and so I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of moving forward with this.
One thing, kind of skipped over a little bit in the presentation, but for expense, I think, you know, it's an estimation, but even if insurance ends up being as bad as, as I discussed earlier, kind of the all-in cost for the first few years is going to be somewhere $20,000, $25,000 a year, kind of all in. Currently, we're spending 15 to keep the dinghy in service. So again, we're all ready, this isn't that much new money. And again, I've mentioned in my memo, it's money we can reprioritize. I'm not asking for new funds to be allocated beyond the, obviously, the initial, the match. That's, that's, I can't, I can't absorb that, but I can absorb the operating costs. We're already doing it. The training, we're already doing, we're doing water rescue training, we're doing boat training. Granted, it'll be a new set of training with new skills, but not significantly different. There won't be a giant difference.
Well, and also, to Mr. Walters' point, you know, right now, there's a significant amount of people out on Gwemas that can't get the service, and if the ferry happens to go down, or if we have a problem with the ferry, I just, I, I think the need has been clearly articulated. So I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm good with this.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I would echo some of Mr. Fantini's comments. I think you provided a lot of information that answered a lot of our questions and a lot of questions of our constituents, looking at just one of their emails with their list of questions. You provided answers to every single one of those, including what are the availability of other boats that could provide this, this function, and why those really are not suitable for the task that we're talking about. I think one of the really important points, though, is that it's, it's us that provides this service. If you're on Gwemas, or maybe if you're kayaking in Deception Pass, or maybe if your boat catches fire in one of the, there isn't anybody else to come provide this service. I mean, maybe we can get a helicopter from someplace at $25,000 a pop, and maybe we can spend a lot of time waiting for that helicopter to show up. But it's, it's on our fire department to provide this service, and we're contracted with Skagit County to provide the medical portion of the, of the service. So I, I don't see a whole lot of alternatives, especially when the cost, especially now, with the likelihood of free mortgage and with the likelihood of help with the match, the, the upfront cost here is very low. I mean, it's really a no-brainer. If we were talking about $700,000 that we had to fund out of our own pocket, we would be having a more in-depth conversation, but, you know, that's why this hasn't come before us before either, because maybe the value proposition wasn't quite there, or maybe it just wasn't really possible to do. One of our concerns, I think, last time around was the idea that this was a new level of service that we were looking at, but I think our understanding is very clearly from your presentation, it really is not. I do think that we all feel a strong obligation to the voters who approved the public safety levy to make sure that we are providing that extra unit at Station 1, that we have availability of people, especially within the city limits, to respond to emergency medical calls, which are by far the most frequent call. So I think that there was probably some concern about this being a distraction from that, but I think properly understood it's part of the core mission. So I am, I'm very comfortable moving this forward now, and I think it's quite an achievement that we actually got this grant. Really, at the, at the end of the day, the, the question is, for $100,000, which might be ultimately our upfront cost on this boat, are we going to save a life or save a $100,000 boat that might catch fire, or the one next to the boat that catches fire? Yeah, seems like there's a kind of a high likelihood that we will have that, and that nets us to zero. And if you save two lives, you know, you're way ahead of the game, so.
Making money.
Or two boats, rather. So, yeah, this is a pretty easy decision. Based on the information you've provided, I, I appreciate the work you've put in on the memo and the presentations to us.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Thank you. My questions are always, I guess, when I look at items that are added costing, and I look at not only the efficiency that they may add to a particular department or, you know, resource that we are attempting to do, but for me, what's also critically important is the cost-benefit analysis. You know, I think every small town, every agency looks for additional tools that they can use in order to be able to fight the issues that they're fighting. And, and I get that. And so when I came at this, I looked also at how many incidents, incidents we're having, the cost associated with that, how we've historically approached that. And then I look at the cost of those new things that we're requesting. And in our budget cycle right about now, you know, we're, I think Mr. Hoagland was already talking about reduce revenues that are coming in, the caution that we're looking as far as fiscally for the city, and how do we continue to do the things that we want to do, need to do, ought to do? And so, you know, at first, I wasn't absolutely sure that this cost was something that we needed to do right now, but to the points that were made, of, of course, by Mr. Fantini and the other council members, as, you know, as well as you, part of that was the fact that we were getting a grant, and that it, the utility of us having this versus the boat that's stored in, you know, La Conner or any of the others. So when I weighed those out, then when I looked at the cost associated and then the possibility of getting some, you know, cost sharing, you know, it, it, it does make it for me better. You know, I, I guess, I'm, I'm always looking to try to figure out how we get that cross-benefit by working together with cities and areas. If we can work together in those negotiations you're attempting to do with the other agencies to be able to use their boat, you know? So I appreciate that, that you're continuing to work on those things, because there is, you know, costs associated even with free money, you know what I mean? And, but in this case, because of all those other things, I, you know, I'm leaning toward yes. You know, I, I agree, it's something that's needed, and I, I believe that you will use it just incredibly efficiently in order to help and preserve lives that are out there. I recognize that, you know? But for me, going forward on probably not just your request or any of the others, the thing that I want to see is the utility. I want to see the cost-benefit analysis, because sometimes, you know, I'd love to have a helicopter in my house, but, you know, that's just not feasible. So I hear you, but I just wanted to put that out there, and I am going to vote for, I really am, because I, I think it's a good thing. But those are the things that, for any of the other departments, I'm going to be looking for. Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
Thank you. The best time to get a rescue boat is before you need to rescue somebody. So would love for you, Chief, to keep track of everybody that you rescue over the next two years, and then invite them to the boat christening ceremony, that hopefully we will all be able to celebrate together. So with that, I move to authorize the mayor to accept the 2024 FEMA Port Security Grant for the purchase of his public safety boat in the amount of $525,000.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hubick and a second by Mr. Fantini to accept the 2024 FEMA Port Security Grant in the amount of 525. Any additional discussion?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I just want to say quickly, thank you, Chief, for answering all of our questions and the questions of our constituents in the memo that you sent us on Thursday and the follow-up emails and in your presentation tonight. It really makes a big difference. Yeah, so.
Honestly, I, I should apologize to counsel, the Chief Burbank had a much more robust presentation two weeks ago. I curtailed it, thinking for time management, and I thought the need was really sort of laid out to you all. So now we've done it and put the work in, and hopefully now you understand.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, motion's still there by Ms. Hubick and a second by Mr. Fantini. Mr. Fantini, a vote please.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougall.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the last item on the written agenda is 7D. It's an inter-local agreement for the Burlington Dark, for Burlington Dark Fiber Optic Connections. It's a discussion item with possible action, and Ms. Shu will present.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, the audience. Tonight, I am bringing before you an inter-local agreement, that's a, a new inter-local agreement with the city of Burlington. This new inter-local provides for two strands of fiber and one rack unit. The previous inter-local agreement that we had The previous inter-local agreement that we had with them was for just one strand. This will help us to, uh, improve our upstream connectivity and is also a source of revenue for us with some dark fiber that we provide to, uh, another entity. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions from Ms. Hsu. Okay, that's where I say motions perhaps then.
Yeah, looks pretty straightforward and, uh, you know, a piece of good business from a, from a profit standpoint. So, uh, I move the city council authorize mayor to execute inter-local agreement as presented.
Second.
Yeah, motion by Mr. McDougal and a second by Ms. Hubick to authorize the execution of inter-local agreement, twenty-four two fifty-six FBR zero zero one with, for Burlington Dark Fiber Optic Connection. Additional discussion?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
Sorry, just two quick questions. Um, the revenue that you talked about, is that the thousand dollars a month that we would be getting, or?
Yes, that we'll continue to receive, yes.
Okay, and then as far as the term, it's a three-year term with the city of Burlington, um, what happens after that three-year term? Are, do these things kind of normally just renew themselves, would that come back before council again?
And my understanding is that this has two automatic in, um.
Renewals?
Renewals, uh, that can, that can happen, um, automatically.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Frantak, vote please.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you, no further business before the council, I'll adjourn tonight's meeting, have a good evening.